Wait, wait, no, I can hold that, but at the time... Next time did the liability... Right, I'm sorry, before anything else. Right, right. But that, which that part into a agreement. I had to understand if they oversold anything.
This would be great, this would not be... I don't know if we're in clear for now.
I didn't fail. There's someone over there, and then...
Is that the owner?
Um, he'd be it. Okay, we didn't have to... Um, yeah.
I just go across the delta. I thought it was gonna be that much, they turned it to a million and a half, I scored.
I don't know, like, it's a fair estimate. I haven't gotten a formal estimate.
I have three stories, but still. I got to save it.
Right, and that's all what we were doing. Right, we have to run it online. All this and then trying to cover it.
After the insurance.
Uh, yeah, I think they worked with the same demand. Uh, we could do it after, okay?
I don't know what's going on here. I wasn't there for any of it also.
I think, I think we're gonna...
That was your job, that's what we got, sir. I don't pay the taxes on my house.
Uh, that's, I think, good. That would be up to her. I will follow up with Mark. Uh, I mean, essentially that's what it is. Right, and I am with the lawyers here. I didn't do it well.
Okay, so, Eric, can you just walk us through some of these other matters? Another case you brought up, although it's not on your list here.
Oh, yeah.
You're handling that now, so...
I was, um...
So you got a couple...
The first one is quickly, I'm sure there's something more.
So, by the way, so since you brought up Gudara, let's just talk about that for a couple minutes. Um, Gudara has, by the way, the newspaper...
Yes, yeah.
They're finding it humorous, this is, uh... Finding it humorous that... Advertising on the city, but... Back to the matter is... Uh, where are we with, you know, our Friday organization?
Uh, I mean, we haven't pursued anything.
I have more than forty-five thousand, I think I have forty-five...
Uh, yeah, I don't remember, did I even look?
Five thousand, I'm all right.
I think it was thirty-five hundred.
Thirty...
Uh, they did maintain this, maybe that... Uh, I mean, the claims that they re...
Uh, we discussed all that, and then you...
I need something to evaluate, I think, but I see you have a report.
Oh, I think I just, I just... They asked to come here... To make these payments directly to the city. Fuck me. That's all, and by the way, that's all dollar for dollar, you know what I mean?
How many of those did he move in?
So thereafter, before close, so it actually brings ours to...
Well, right, and that's where there's two, so... I was with the jury after. We're in a party, we're partying to that. Oh, really, man? All of them, Gudara, umbrella.
Yeah, well, big problem.
Obviously, so obviously, I mean, they all... Perfect, or what, a special program?
Definitely true, exactly. Yes, and so my point, I only bring that up to you in that they'll probably do a news article pretty soon. Sort of silly, huh?
I feel as if I have a guess on Gudara.
So we got the Springfield Rogers, um, then we have the, another old... Nothing really new.
No, just very basic.
Can I ask you one other thing, just on the... So, I was looking at impressions all the days, and when?
Uh...
And I see some pretty big checks here.
All for really good. I was friends with opposition.
I think Richardson is working.
And so...
Five thousand, three thousand, nine thousand. That's the amount for the... That's...
Or is meant to be eight thousand, it is...
I think it's... Probably got a check for six thousand. I think it's... Probably got a check for six thousand. We're without no claim of what...
Our...
You know, the way construction of the...
Their position on that and how we... It's what we do.
How's the last three there?
On the last three, the...
Question, it's not the pro or it is not... But it's, it's the issue of granting, what, what their meaning is, it was all...
I thought that, um...
It's that summary judgment, so...
That's one is, uh, it's working. They're turning the letter out.
My goodness, President, oh, is that, you were talking about it, Stan?
Oh, cool.
President, we're at the end of this cast, so we probably should hold up safely. Office, that's the purpose. I surprise, what the recorders would exactly say. Absolutely, thank you, that's an excellent, and your, your state. I think we should never get a lose if we start...
Absolutely.
Yeah, that's a great point, sometimes if people do walk out and they start talking about something that doesn't take... That's what's nice. No thoughts? All right, so we need to take a proposal, a motion, and a hot exclamation. So, as motion's been made, the second to exit executive session. Uh, love to you. Also, you can, uh, hold. Counselor Barley?
Yes.
Sir, President's not with us, Counselor Shada?
Yes.
Counselor Gray? Yes, Counsel Lady?
Yes.
Omar Tina? Counselor McGee?
Yes.
Counselor McGibber?
Yes.
Counselor Roman?
Yes.
Counselor Sullivan?
Yes.
Counselor Tomlin?
Yes.
Counselor Bacon? Tomlin.
Yes.
Okay, we are now out of executive session. Uh, the purpose for which we are here was to get a litigation update is now concluded. A motion to adjourn would be in order. Okay, adjourn.
Second.
Made a second to adjourn, all in favor of adjourned?
Aye.
So move special session, city council, these adjournments in about two, three minutes, we'll be coming up the next month. So everybody, just ourselves, that's all, so...
Just the word, it's... Start with you, all the way through.
Thank you. I will. Hi, how you doing? Thanks, Ryan. Oh, okay. Do you want me to just pass these to you as I'm signing them?
Nah, put them all once.
Do them?
Yeah. That way you don't worry about it.
If this Frenchman, we can give him a decision, and then we can swap.
Yeah, hang on. There you go, Dave.
Oh, thank you.
I don't think I missed second signatures in a pile, but if I did...
We're Coleman. Yeah. Oh, yes, oh, yeah, okay, yeah, absolutely, I, I hope it all works out. Oh, yeah, no, I, I'll let that go. Oh, no, I... Oh, no, I...
David, quick question, in case you know this. Motion of course the first reading, motion had a order of read, or being... So enrolled is the second.
Well, you can take a look at our rules, because our rules kind of lay, lay out in there, the revised rules.
Yep.
Uh, if you don't have a copy, I, I probably...
I got them somewhere, I just had to... I knew it was reduced from five to three.
Yep. You're in front of the law, you gotta sign.
Oh. Thanks. I knew we had changed it, but I just, I couldn't remember if it was in the rules, I do have my rules right here.
I have rules too. Right on. Go play first. The notes. That's awesome. Love them all. We gotta get together. We gotta get together. About that order. Election day, election week. Election week. I know, but you just let me know. You pull the trigger, I got you. Oh, wait. She said...
Okay. First reading. Oh, thank you.
I'm still looking for that staple button for you.
That what?
The staples. As much as you want, I'll sign with you.
I saw, but you shouldn't be voting. Because I mean, you refused to say something way less dramatic, but you were also...
I do.
Oh, alright.
I want that battle project.
It was on clerk, hang on, when I see it, I don't want to...
I don't, I don't want, you know, I want to support your children's education, so... With a, with a cell tower, polio, so that's great. Alright, well, we'll, we'll do our best, I can't make an absolute...
Clerk.
Clearly, you're, you're on that, right, Kev?
I'm good.
Yeah, okay, good. You're leading the charge.
I didn't say it yet.
Okay, cool, cool. It's true, it is true.
Yeah, yeah.
Nothing to see here.
Thank you.
A rule reading?
Okay. It says first reading, second reading, enrolled, received ordain, but we changed that.
I have the latest one, December twenty fourteen.
Alright, so I gotta talk to... Because I know there's not by step select. I need... I know it got reduced from five to three.
Three, yes. Final action, council pass?
First reading.
Second reading.
Second reading.
Third reading, by a two-thirds majority.
So first sec, first reading...
Okay. Not that I'm aware of, no, no, luckily, yeah.
Everybody ready? Okay. Like to call this January nineteenth session of the Hoyoke City Council to order, the clerk will call the roll and record those members present.
Bartley?
Here.
Presnahan?
Here.
Chattnuff?
Here.
Grady?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Leahy?
Uh, present.
LeBron Martinez?
Here.
Lisi?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
McGivern?
Here.
Roman?
Presente.
Sullivan?
Here.
Tomlin?
Here.
Bacon?
Here.
Valentine?
Here.
All rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. God bless America. And the city of Hoyoke.
And the city comes.
From our prior meeting, we had one item left laid on the table, and that is the petition of Verizon New England. Is there any pleasure at this time to do anything with that? Hearing no motions, we continue. No one signed up for public comment? So we are going to move forward on that, which before we do any other communications therefore, it's my pleasure, I would like to, uh, at this time, to, um, recognize, uh, one of our former colleagues, Anthony Soto, our former Ward Two counselor. Uh, Anthony, uh, did a fantastic job representing the people of Ward Two, uh, in that duty, he worked, he's very, very deeply committed to the city of Hoyoke, and it's, uh, really, at this time, my pleasure, I see, he's also, uh, joined by his lovely wife Lisa, and I'd like to welcome them both up to, uh, the rostrum at this time to come up and, uh, join us. For a presentation. Anthony, on behalf of your colleagues who have had the pleasure of serving with you for the last four years on the city council, I wanted to present this plaque, uh, recognizing your four years of service dedicated to the people of Ward Two and the Hoyoke, and the city of Hoyoke generally, thank you so much for all of your work that you did to make Ward Two and our city a better place. Anthony Soto, thank you so much.
Mr. President, Mr. President, could I sign on to that?
Yes, you can.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President, thank you, Kevin. Uh, from day one that I walked in the doors here, uh, I could say that President Jordan was very helpful, uh, we didn't always agree on everything all the time, but that's what, uh, politics is all about. Again, I, I thank all the people who entrusted me in, in Ward Two, uh, to elect me twice. Um, I thank each and every one of yous in here for all the experiences and everything that I learned. I want to congratulate each and every one of you on your reelections and your elections, and I know that the city of Hoyoke is in good hands, and I ask that we just continue working forward and working together, um, that's the only way we're going to get things done in this city, so, uh, thank you again, God bless you all, God bless city of Hoyoke, and again, thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Under Communications, item number two.
Make a motion and take item number two and number four and send to commi, uh, actually, uh, reappoint.
Three and four.
Two, three, and four?
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to take up items two, three, and four, and take them up as a package, uh, any objection to that?
We have to have two first.
Okay. Very good, okay. Taking two out of the package, we'll do, start with number two. Item number two is a communication from the mayor, Alex Morris, it's a letter reappointing Ms. Dahlia Hires Dermuth of thirty-seven Longfellow Road to serve as a commissioner of the Board of Health for the city of Hoyoke. Ms. Hires Dermuth will serve a three-year term, said term will expire on February first, two thousand nineteen. Is there a motion?
Take a motion to adopt and confirm the reappointment.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive the appointment and to confirm it, any discussion? Uh, Counsel LeBron Martinez?
Just for correction, her name is Dalila.
Dalila, huh?
Dalila, yes, Dalila.
Dalila?
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, sorry for butchering her, her first name.
That's okay, yes. I just also want to say that I, I am in support of this in particular, um, person, um, that has been doing the, uh, public health work for many years, um, during my time on Nueva Esperanza, we had a grant that related to HIV, teen pregnancy, and her working at the, um, Department of Public Health in North Hampton was a great asset to, to continue in this particular, we also then got a C-Stop grant, which was like, I believe three hundred thousand dollars, that's where I began my community work with that kind of grant, reaching out, um, uh, due to the epidemic of HIV and also drug, um, you know, uh, disposition in the community, and, um, she was very helpful with all the support we needed for that, thank you.
Excellent, thank you. Anybody else? Yeah, Counsel Valton?
Thank you, um, I also, um, I'm, I'm definitely in support of, of Dalila in this role, um, when I was the executive director at Casa Latina in North Hampton, in nineteen ninety-eight, or ninety-nine, something like that, um, she was also with DPH, Department of Public Health in North Hampton, and, um, has been an asset to the community, I'm definitely excited that she's here in Hoyoke, she used to live in East Hampton, um, so I was happy to hear when she had moved to Hoyoke and, uh, definitely an asset to our community here, so definitely in favor.
Thank you. Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor of confirming her, uh, reappointment?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed, so moved. Item number three, item number three is a communication from Mayor Alex Morse, it's a letter reappointing Seth Taylor of four oh eight Southampton Road to serve as a member of the Conservation Commission, uh, Mr. Taylor will serve a three-year term, uh, said term will expire on February first, two thousand nineteen.
Under suspension of the rules, um, let's receive and confirm the reappointment.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and to confirm the appointment, recognizing Counsel Sullivan.
I'd like to make an amendment to refer to committee.
Refer to committee? You'd like to, what, have her come in and ask some questions?
Ask some questions, yes.
Okay, alright.
Second amendment for purpose of discussion.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to send this nominee to committee, presumably the other one as well, if you have some questions, I think, okay, um, any further discussion on that?
Is this for three and four?
Uh, no, we're just on three now, but...
Oh, because we were discussing as a package, I thought, three and four.
That got broken up.
Okay.
We, we never, yeah. Uh, Michael, do you want to just make a couple brief statements as to why you think it should go to committee?
Um, I, I just think there's a lot of issues, uh, that have gone on in the last three years, I, I'd like to get some answers on, and, uh, you know, see the stand on some of the, it, pending issues also that I see coming down the road.
Okay. Anybody else?
Can I, through the chair?
Yeah, sure, Counsel Valton.
So, so for, for Counselor Sullivan, so is this, I mean, is this your, your thought in terms of any reappointments for the Conservation Commission, or is it particular to these two individuals, because that's what I'm struggling with in terms of where you're going with your motion?
It, it would be for any, uh, reappointments at this point, or, yeah.
For Conservation Commission?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, motion on the floor without further discussion is to send these, uh, send item number three to committee, oh, Counsel Bartley?
I, I didn't hear a second on it.
Yeah, Counsel McGivern seconded it.
For discussion purposes, okay, thank you.
Well, it's not like for discussion or not, it's, you're either second or you're not seconding, so, yeah, Counsel McGivern.
I, I did second for, uh, for discussion purposes, Counsel Sullivan asked me some procedural questions, um, I explained to him how, how to do it, uh, traditionally, we've, whenever, even though reappointments are confirmed, uh, with the exception of if there's any issues, we pretty much recon, we pretty much adopt the reconfirmation of the mayor's appointments, however, uh, Counsel Sullivan being new, says he has some questions for these, uh, individuals, so I will support the, uh, a committee, uh, interview of them to allow them time to ask his questions.
Well, and the other, the other point I would also make here is, is as we know, that these individuals continue to serve until their nominees are, uh, if they were replaced, so they're gonna, they're gonna continue to stay on the commission unless the city council did something other to, to not confirm and the mayor, uh, elected to put somebody else, so... It's not like if we don't confirm this person, they cease to be a member of the Conservation Commission, so, just to, you know, if you do have questions, Counsel Lisi?
I think Bartley had his, um, hand up first, but I do want to speak.
Oh, I, I'm having a difficult time picking up that hand, we gotta get a little higher, over the shoulder. Counsel Bartley? Yes, sir.
Yeah, uh, so, no, no disrespect to anybody, so, I mean, these, these things are going to happen, but I, I'm going to, uh, to oppose this, and that, that the vote, I, I'd rather just confirm both of these, and, and I'll just, I'll say why, uh, we did have the whole Conservation Commission in front of, uh, the committee that I chaired last year at some point, and, and while there, there were a, a number, I, I was very grateful of, of their, how forthright they were and that their, and their input, uh, one is their, their, they've been interviewed one time already, second of all, I, I've attended most interviews, and they're all very accomplished people, third of all, they're all volunteers, fourth of all, um, the conservation director was here, and not one single application was denied, not, not one, for, for any conservation issue in the city, so, um, so I'm, I'm sure there's questions, but, you know, we're not, Mr. President, the United States Senate, where, where we, you know, grill people and, uh, and then it's not like they're being appointed to the, to the Supreme Court and, uh, you know, you know, next, next woman up if we, if we knock them back down, um, I'm personally, I, I mean, I don't know these people, other than the, the times they've been here, I'm just very thankful for their, uh, willingness to volunteer and for their interests and for their, uh, willingness to support the city, so consequently, I will not vote in support of the motion on the floor, thank you.
Uh, anybody else want to be heard, Counsel Lisi?
Uh, thank you, I just, um, I agree with Counsel Bartley, I'd rather not, um, hold up the confirmation and reappointment of these individuals, they can always be called in for a conversation if there are questions, um, and I'm sure that, um, you know, the, the door is always open to the Conservation Commissioner, um, if there's, um, specific issues that need to be, uh, addressed, but, um, to hold up the confirmation, as you said, it's not like they cease to be, um, appointed if we don't confirm them, um, and I don't think it's likely that the mayor would appoint someone else if we, even if we don't confine, um, don't confirm them at this point, so, I'd rather not hold up the reappointment, and if there's questions, just bring them in under a different order.
Uh, Counsel Roman?
Um, I'd like to rise in support of the gentleman, uh, my colleague, uh, Counsel Sullivan, again, if, uh, you know, with all due respect to the Chair of DGNR, we are the twoest new members of this body, and we are and have been elected by our constituents, and if my colleague has questions, I will rise in support and sit next to him and question any person that he would like to question, being the twoest new members, I feel that it is our right and our authority to do so, if we have pause, and if the gentleman has a million questions, I'll sit here all night with him if he'd like, I think that it is our legislative duty, he was elected at large, I was elected in my ward, and if the gentleman rises and would like to just pause and ask some questions, I don't see why two weeks would make the difference either way, Mr. President, um, so through you, I rise in support of my colleague, uh, Counsel Sullivan, and I would recommend if, as the twoest new members of this body, we would like that, if, if my colleagues would please afford us that opportunity, thank you.
Counsel Sullivan? I would just say one other thing to explain myself to the rest of the group is, I don't know either of these people at all, I've had no interaction with them, uh, it's, uh, as, uh, Counsel Roman just said, uh, we're going to be working with these people for three years, and I, I have questions I'd like to put to them before I confirm them.
Good. Fair enough. Okay, without any other further discussion? Alright. Motion on the floor is to send... on the floor is to send item number three to committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Show of hands. All in favor, raise your hand. Ten, motion carries. Item number four.
Mr. President, I make a motion to send item number four to committee as well.
Okay, motion's been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to send item four to committee. Let me just read it real quickly. This is a appointment letter from the mayor seeking to reappoint Ms. Anya Ryan Duffy of 118 Sycamore Street, Hoyoke. Ms. Duffy will serve a three-year term. That term will expire on February 1st, 2019, submitted the mayor. And motion on the floor is to send to the, the other one was Public Service Committee. This also would be the Public Service Committee, which handles all of our appointments. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Item number five. Item number five is a communication from the mayor. This is addressed to yours truly, dear Council President Jordane. As you and I both described in our inaugural day speeches, the issue of our city's structural deficit is one that requires our immediate attention. A bond advisor recently told us that the city's finances have been managed well, but that we need to address the structural deficit. She made very clear that we must be willing not only to look at cuts, but also to seek new sources of revenue as well. I appreciate your desire to work cooperatively to tackle this longstanding problem. We have the opportunity to make history by eliminating the structural deficit for the first time in decades. I know we are both eager to get this done. I'm writing to you to ask you to serve on a team of five counselors that will help the city's finance team to come up with a budget reform package. It will be up to you to choose the other four counselors to join this group. My hope is that the team will bring a diversity of perspective to this process and to ensure that the budget reforms are applied equitably. I know any conversation about the budget will be a sensitive one because we all care about preserving the basic functions of government that people rely on. But we need to acknowledge that no other issue will have more impact on our long-term goals than this one. There are still bound to be difficult discussions about what cuts need to be made and how to raise additional revenue. But we, we're not selected to fear big challenges. We were elected to solve them. As you stated in your January 4th speech, difficult choices need to be made, so let's make them. I'm looking forward to working with the team you assembled to eliminate the structural deficit and to set Hoyoke on a financially healthy pla-- path. Sincerely, Mayor Alex Morris. So that was a very nice letter from the mayor. We thank him for that. And to that end, as you know, counselors, I have sent a solicitation out to all of you to see if you would be kind enough to join this committee. So far, I have had myself and three others step up. I do have one other seat that if someone was interested, I'd be honored to have you on it. I do see one hand go up as a volunteer. Counsel Lisi.
Just out of curiosity, is it, who else would be on the committee?
As of the moment, myself, Counsel McGee signed up, Counsel Roman signed up, Counsel Vacan signed up, and if somebody else is interested. I know Counsel McGivern is interested.
Beyond counselors, are there other departments or taxpayers?
Yes, he want, the mayor would like us to have five counselors, and then he's gonna have all the different various financial-related department heads.
Okay.
Yep. Uh, we're working on that. So, yeah, to answer your question, he has a whole array of people that will also be serving on it. Okay, great. All right, very good. So that takes care of item number five. So a motion just to receive, I think, would be in order.
Receive.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number six. Thank you. Item number six comes to us from our assistant city solicitor. It's a legal opinion regarding the use of a cemetery for an additional as-of-right use.
Receive and send a copy to ordinance.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number seven. Item number seven is the minutes of our January 5th. Uh, this does, oh, that went with, item number seven, sir. Thank you. Item number seven is from Ryan Allen, our administrative assistant, as well as Brenna Murphy McGee, our city clerk. It's the minutes of our January 5th, 2016 meeting. Is there a motion to receive and approve?
Second.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight.
Eight through 11 as a package, please, suspending the rules.
Motion to suspend the rules to take up items eight through 11 as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Item number eight is the Board of Health minutes of November 12th. Item number nine is the Retirement Board minutes of October 13th, October 20th, October 28th, and October 29th. Item number 10 is the Redevelopment Authority minutes of October 21st. Item number 11 is the Thomas J. O'Connor Animal Control and Adoption Center minutes from June 10th and September 9th.
Do you receive?
Motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Second to receive. Under discussion, Counsel Bresnan.
Just briefly, I believe the minutes from, that we got from the Board of Health are the same ones that we got at our last meeting, because this is, these are from November. They had a December's meeting, and we're in January 18th. They had a January's meeting, I assume, because they basically have it the first week of the month.
Yes.
So could we just have Ryan make sure that the, these are supposed to be November? Because I'm pretty sure these are the same ones we got last month.
Okay, you want to double check on that? Looks like it might be a duplicate. Okay. All right, any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. President's report. Well, I'm gonna keep this brief because we did have a executive session earlier, so we started about 30 minutes late. So I only have one other thing, and that is that the Office of Community Development Block Grant requested that a representative, ideally of the DGNR committee, which is the tradition, to serve as a member of the Citizens Advisory Council. Typically, historically, the city council has had one seat on that board. And I've asked the chairman, Mr. Bartley, to find us a, find me a worthy candidate to appoint to this position. So Counsel Bartley will handle that.
I've asked one member of the committee who's not able to do it. I'd like to see if there's a volunteer, hopefully, before I, I've got something, a lot of outside things already relative to the city. So I just understand, saying the word to counselor now has an outside engagement relative to the city.
And he just signed up for another committee.
Right, so hopefully the Vice Chair, or maybe the one of the newer members would...
Maybe Mr. McGivern or Mr. Sullivan if you could take.
Just to consider it for now. And it's meeting for the Citizens Advisory Committee, and that's part of the multi-step process that gets us to a CDBG allocation.
Yep. So keep that in mind.
Thank you.
All right, that's it for the President's report at this, this point. Counsel Bartley.
Mr. President, can we suspend the rules and take, take 16A and B out of order, please?
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to suspend the rules to take up item 16A and 16B as a package. Let me just flip ahead to that. These are two Development and Government Relations Committee reports. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. So we are now with 16A and 16B combined as a package now before the body. I will read those to you. 16A, the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application for the approval of 199-foot new wireless telecommunications facility inside the Flood Plain Overlay District at 200 North Hampton Street, Hoyoke, Massachusetts, with a MBP 227, I believe that's parcel number, 00-005. Recommend that the application be approved. Item number 16B is that the Committee on Development and Government Relations, to whom was referred a special permit application for Sprint Spectrum LP, Sprint, and co-applicant T-Mobile Northeast LLC, T-Mobile, that their application be approved. Their application seeks for the approval of a 199-foot new wireless telecommunications facility to be located at 200 North Hampton Street, Hoyoke, Massachusetts, on parcel 227-00-005.
So a motion received and adopted committee report.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive both of 16A and B and to approve. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. So this is the second time it's been before, but whatever happened before doesn't really matter, because we had to, we had to restart the special permit process over again due to a, kind of a technical glitch within the city. Not related to this body, by the way, just make that clear. But a little technical glitch happened and these things happen in life. So, so we just had a redo. And what really happened is we, we had the applicant come in and provided a present, presentation to us. And since I've, I've gone over this with everyone in this room, I don't know if there's a reason to do it again. It's basically to, to say in some that there's now a 372-foot smokestack as part of the power plant out in Smith Ferry. That power plant is going away. The smokestack is eventually gonna come down. But right now, the owner of the power plants and smokestack are telling, telling T-Mobile and Sprint that they have to remove their communication devices sooner rather than later. And, and because, and because of that, because of that, the, they're before us now. What they propose is a 199-foot pole that's gonna be located a little bit to the north and a little bit to the east of where the current smokestack is situated. So, so we had a public hearing, and so, you know, council and their engineering team came in and, and provided the particulars on this, which I'll, it might just be better for me to answer questions if, if that's, if that's, if that's the will, as opposed to kind of regurgitating what I've already done. We did have one party come in opposition. The owner of the log cabin and Delaney House was represented by council and, and, and made, made a lot, a lot of great points, a lot of valid points, and to the, to the, to the stage where the committee voted only three to two to, to grant a special permit. I happen to be in the majority, and, and to me, I, I didn't, I thought the, I thought the, the argument about aesthetics, while I, I tend to agree with it in the sense that aesthetically, a monopole isn't that great. But what do we have now, Mr. President? We have now a 372-foot smokestack that is, is going to be demolished. I've happened to go up to Delaney House, as most recently as today, to look at it, the situation. And, and frankly, you can see it, you can see a light flashing up there, but it's, it's, it's hard to see the smokestack. So it's hard to get their aesthetic argument from the perspective of Delaney House. Now, I get it that it's on the gateway coming into Hoyoke South from North Hampton, East Hampton line. I understand that. The other argument that they made was, wow, you know, why couldn't, why couldn't they do what Verizon did and, and put the cell tower on top of, of the Delaney House? Now, Delaney House just came in here and we granted that permit. Now, they're gonna get a nice check every month for that. One, it's not our business to say to a private sector, you know, where you put your thing. But the second, the most important thing is, at 70 feet, the applicant for Sprint T-Mobile felt it wasn't sufficient to meet its needs. Currently now, it's, it's well over 300 feet in the air, one of their, their devices. Their highest they can go right now is 199 feet. So they felt like for their customers, and by the way, the City of Hoyoke is, is, is allowed to go up there, not at the 199-foot level, but the 155-foot level to go on that, on that monopole. So, so with all that in mind, with those arguments, as much as we admire, and, and, and I really, really thought the lawyer did a tremendous job, and Peter Roscotten is a tremendous corporate citizen in Hoyoke. In this case, I, I felt, and the majority felt, that the applicant had, had met its burden. This was reviewed by the law departments, reviewed by every other body in the city. They've all approved it. So I came down on that side of the ledger. Thank you.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you for the detailed report, too. I was extremely, extremely saddened to see that the amount of tax dollars that are gonna be leaving because of that coal plant. However, on the opposite side, I'm extremely happy that the terrible eyesore, the 372 smokestack, will be taken down. You know, in my opinion, you know, smokestack, what's that causing? That's causing probably asthma and cancer. I don't know that, I'm not a doctor, but it can't be good things. And I'll keep saying, in my own opinion, the fact that we're losing the 372-foot smokestack is ideal. I mean, if we look up at the mirror behind our president, I mean, what do we have? We have 11 miles of the Connecticut River along the side of the City of Hoyoke. I mean, this is absolutely stunning. The fact that another business is coming in and saying that, you know, it's gonna be an eyesore for their business, well, you know, quite frankly, it's a local Hoyoke business. And are we gonna stick up for the Hoyoke local business? Are we gonna stick up for the wireless companies? I'm not sure the last time they stuck up for us. I do want to say, that's my opinion, I'm gonna support, or I should say, I'm not gonna support these issues. I want to make sure that we support local businesses and we continue to have the best view of the Connecticut River. Thank you.
Counsel Graney.
Yeah, how much compensation is the City of Hoyoke gonna receive for this tower from T-Mobile?
Now, through the chair, do you, Counsel Bartley?
We, we, Mr. President, we, this, this was estimated by the assessor the last go round, I believe, was $7,000 in personal property taxes per year.
Okay, Counsel Roman.
Yes, Mr. President, thank you. I was one of the two counselors who voted in the minority against this proposal. Again, I thank both gentlemen and the applicants for coming in, and thank you, Counsel Leahy. On the mountain, the top there, you can see a stack or some poles or some wires. I don't know what those two things are at the top of the mountain, but there's also some eyesore at the top of that mountain there, if you're closely looking on this side of the room. I felt that the applicant, where they did give good knowledge and research, they cited it, it was almost in a threatening fashion, the 1996 Telecommunications Act and the lack of coverage and their efforts, if this failed to almost sue the City of Hoyoke. And thank you to the Delaney House Log Cabin. And in my personal research and in my opinion, looking at the 1996 Telecommunications Act, there is, as long as the city provides ample opportunity for the applicant to locate another area, the city has its own engineers, we can provide and say, hey, a pole can go here. And I also disagree with the monopole use. The materials is not in, in great for those constituents. And I've reached out to individuals besides just the business in that area, and it is and will be an eyesore for residents coming around into that part of the City of Hoyoke. So for that reason, I did rise in, in the minority against this, and I will be voting no against it today. I don't think it is a win-win for the City of Hoyoke. And again, you know, I think, I would like to thank, though, Counsel McGivern, who, as the dean of the city council, including my first committee meeting, was very helpful in educating and really teaching me the ropes, if you will, Mr. President, but I still rise against this order. And again, I know I'll probably be in the minority again, but I still rise and wanted to share the minorities' report.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Sullivan.
And I would just like to share that one, the reason I'm still opposed to it is one of the questions that was posed to both sides was whether, to both attorneys, was whether the Delaney House had been approached to do the same thing as Verizon. And that would keep it out of the sight of the public and eliminate altogether. It's still a very nice improvement for a small monopole on a different piece of the property than the huge smokestack that exists. But what disturbed me was to have two attorneys sit there and one say yes and one say no. And to me, somebody's not telling me the truth. And I would, I would, I don't know if I've figured this out yet. I would make a motion to refer it back to me, committee, to get that one question answered.
Is there a second?
Mr. President, I think that motion might be out of order for no other reason than, it was a public hearing. We've closed the public hearing. So essentially, what we've taken in for, for facts and due diligence should have been through the public hearing process and not through additional processes, other than with city department heads and so on.
Okay. Counsel McGivern just articulated why he's against it going back to committee, but is there a second to it going to committee? Motion fails for lack of a second. Counsel McGivern was next up for speaking.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think there's a lot of good points being made here, including one by our friend, Mr. Peter Rosington. The, those issues, even before we found out that due to no fault, as Counsel Bartley says of the city council, that there was two abutters or one abutter, you know, two properties that weren't notified at the original public hearing, were issues that were brought out in both public hearings. The one I talk about is the economic... The one I talk about is the economic development one. I just remind everyone, this is privately owned property, and we want it to remain privately owned property. We're not going to make up the revenue and tax dollars that we saw from the Mountain Coal Plant, but whatever Suez does with this property, whatever development comes of it, is very important to the city. And this is only a small part, but part of their overall proposal, which they seem to be sinking their teeth into the solar panel energy field as proposed by the advisory group that we condoned and was set up by the mayor. What's before us is a special permit at the request of a private property owner, through the request of the attorney who was representing the developer, for two vendors who need to provide service for people who have a phone. If you have a phone, you know the worst thing in the world is to go into a no-service area. So when you speak to try to ensure all vendors have the ability to provide the service to their customers, we're speaking for all the constituents in the city of Holyoke who own a phone and understand the importance of a cellphone. It's not for us to determine which private property owner is going to get the benefit of the contract with the vendor as to where that cellphone is. I think the most important thing is Suez is trying to get the smokestack down as quickly as possible. A lot of situations like this, communities have been dumped down with coal plants, dumped down with the hazardous disposal removal, and just walked away. There are some, thankfully, very strict federal laws that make it difficult for any company to walk away from their responsibility. But the city has been working with this company to develop the property in the best way. It's a lot of floodplains, it's a lot of riverfront with a railroad that goes right through it. There's not a lot that can be developed the way we'd love to see it, unfortunately. So I think we have to make the worst of a bad situation. What I said at the meeting, and I'm not an expert, but we've been hearing for 10 years about the Telecommunications Act, about like any special permit process, you need a reason to deny. I haven't heard that reason yet that will stand up in court. And I think we heard this evening, we were briefed on the litigation that we are facing. I'm not saying this is a threat, but for me to vote no on a special permit, I need to have a reason that will stand up in court, and I've yet to hear that.
Counsel Lucy.
Thank you. Through the president to the chair or any committee members that might be able to comment, I'm wondering if there was any discussion as to why there was a selection of a monopole as amongst other types of structures?
There was not.
Okay. And then, secondly, does anyone have any information about how high the tree line is currently in that area?
I do not.
There were balloon tests that were run, Mr. President, and the balloon tests show... I'm not going to state numbers because I'll mess it up if I do, but the balloon tests did show where the height of the pole would be in terms of both the mountain. No residential property in the area that's immediately going to be affected by this. The plans, if you exist, the maps are in our office. The plans do show that the location of this cellphone tower is to the northern part of the property, partially on the floodplain line itself. This would be north of where the proposed solar fields are, well north of where the smoke tower is right now, almost to the East Hampton line.
Counsel Lucy.
So if I just may continue, so I guess the idea that like we could deny this because we'd like to like push business towards another location in the city doesn't seem like a sound way to, you know, react to the proposal that's before us. But on the other hand, I'd be interested in understanding, you know, if the monopole was selected because it might be something that's easy to take down, just as easy as it is to put up, so if Suez wanted to do something else with the property. And so these are just things that were on my mind. Thank you.
If it's any assistance, the new one that's proposed for Scott's Tower, I'm told, they're using a monopole, too, and they're told that this is the new technology that they're using is, that's kind of like industry standard, they use those monopole styles, if that's any help. I did not have anybody else that had asked to speak. Is there any further discussion? Counsel McGee.
Yeah, just real quick, and I think Joe touched on it perfectly in the sense of, we haven't really heard a reason to deny it yet. And I'll just remind people, I know we have two new counselors, but this already came up and we approved it. No against, all in favor, no against. I understand the two newbies want to, in essence, sit down and go through it some more and stuff, and I appreciate that. But once again, I've yet to hear any reason why we shouldn't do it. You currently have a very tall tower, higher than what's going to go in, with cell tower equipment on it. It's already there. So eyesore, yeah, it's there. This one's going to go lower, it's going to be telecommunications, it's going to be a cell tower, shorter. Whether or not we like the pole or way it is, that's fine, that was taken up in committee as well. But the real issue is, why are we now going to say we're in favor of it and now we're denying it? There really is no reason, other than a current owner who for whatever reason was left out of the process, now comes in and says, I don't like it because potentially it could go on mine. And we all received that email. Okay, I'm just going to let you know one thing. You don't have a reason to deny it, you are now taking a vote to potentially force this person to then go to that business and try and put it there. That's what it looks like in a court argument. Do you want to take that chance? I know we're cash-rich in lawsuits, because we've seen that, we just had the update. I'm just asking you, you're walking down a path to a legal suit, and I'm not trying to threaten you and I'm not saying they're threatening you, I'm just saying, the facts, as we put them together, are not looking in favor of the city. I understand we want to question everything, but you have yet to come up with a reason.
Counsel Graney.
Mr. President, why don't we poll the council?
That's what we, yeah, we call it a roll call. She gives your name and that is our poll. Counsel Sullivan.
I get the joke.
Just as far as...
Levity, Howie, that's all right.
Oh, is that what you were doing? Oh, okay.
That's all right, that's all right.
Right over my head, I'm sorry.
Wow.
Wow. Sorry, Howie, I missed that joke. Good one. It took me a couple minutes, I'm slow. Counsel Sullivan.
To answer Counsel McGee, as far as forcing someone to approach them, the question that was posed to them was, had they approached, had they exhausted all other avenues, right? And I did not receive a satisfactory answer on that. That's my opposition on that. As far as a good reason for denying it, I would also submit that 7,000 seems like a mere pittance for the economic value that would be gained by that tower.
Counsel Leahy.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I thanked all the counselors for saying that I don't have a good reason, I can vote for anything I want to, anything I don't want to. So you know what? I don't care what they have to say. I think it's going to be a major eyesore, in my opinion, it's going to continue to be an eyesore, and that's the way I'm going to vote.
Counsel Roman.
I would just like to clarify, the applicant did clarify that they did have those conversations, and I would like to confirm that as being the minority, so I wanted to confirm two things. One is, yes, the applicant did clarify that, I'm still voting in opposition. And two, to your point, Counsel McGee, is no one's saying, and I'm never saying in the minority, that you have to approach the Delaney Log Cabin, that is not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is I've done my due diligence under the 1996 Telecommunications Act, that the applicant cited as a potential reason to sue the city of Holyoke if this didn't go through. And I'm not a lawyer, Mr. President, so I am a layman. All it said in that act was that the city had to provide sufficient or alternative sites. And I'm sure the applicant can, and to Counsel McGivern's point, the applicant didn't say that the service would be zero, that it would be diminished, if I would have to clarify, I don't know the legal name for that, that it would be diminished, not completely gone. We've gone to tons of parts within this country and in the state and in the city where you have low bars and high bars. So it's not that your cellphone service is going to disappear in the city of Holyoke if this tower doesn't go up. But where I do agree with Counsel Lucy is the monopole in this neighborhood, I don't think it's appropriate, I don't think it's well, and I've done my research, and I, again, like everyone, whether I'm new, old, stay on this council for 20 years or 30 years, I'm going to do what I feel is in the best interest of the city of Holyoke. I don't think the monopole's the best interest for our city.
Counsel Bacon.
Can you hear me now?
I just want to say that I do take Counselor McGee's points to heart because the body already did take a vote on this matter. And I do think it does create an action on the part of the committee. So for those of us who already took one vote, I do think there is an argument to be made that we would have to have a reason to then change our vote, which would be, need to be a compelling reason. For me, I believe this is one of the areas of the city where the public safety signals are also poor. And one of the things that, as a body, we've just recently done is make these new agreements where we can have our equipment on the poles as well. And so I think, to the extent that this may help that aspect, along with the private, people who want to do it on their private property will motivate me to continue to vote in favor as I did the first time. Thank you.
Anybody else want to be heard? Very good. All right, I'm going to take a vote.
A poll.
A poll, a poll, if you will. But this one's a permanent vote, okay? Unless we make a vote to reconsider.
That's P-O-L-L.
So yes is for the committee reports?
I'm going to... Don't steal my thunder. This is what I get paid to do up here, you know?
There you go.
All right. So clerk is going to call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the committee report on both 16A and 16B. Committee recommendation is to grant this special permit to allow the installation of this 199-foot structure. A no vote is to deny that, okay? Counsel Tomlin.
Mr. President, what are the number of votes needed for this passage?
10.
10 votes, okay. So everybody knows.
Two-thirds majority. Okay. All right, without further ado, the clerk will call the roll.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
No.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lucy?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
No.
Sullivan? 12 A's and 3 Nays.
By your vote, you have granted the special permits to T-Mobile Northeast and Sprint Spectrum LP for the installation of that pole, okay? 16A, 16B. Moving back to regular order. We are back under ordinance committee reports, 12A. Item number 12A is a report from the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the DPW install a blinking crosswalk lights at the corner of Nanatack and Lincoln as soon as possible. Half consider the same, recommend that this order be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Lucy, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane.
Thank you, Mr. President. So a motion to pass the first reading would be in order?
It's not to create an ordinance, right? So we could just send, just adopt, I think.
Oh, okay.
On this one.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just requesting the DPW to install this light.
Okay, then a motion to adopt the committee report in this regard?
A motion's been made and seconded to adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. I would note that Engineer Yem Lip came in, and he was very helpful throughout the entire meeting. And while he did recognize that there should be a crosswalk put there, there is a price tag associated with it, and there is no money in the budget item. So while we are recommending that it be adopted to the maker of the order, I believe Counsel McGee, you would want to pursue the money. So... And if the maker has any other comments, I'll defer to the maker of the order.
Good. Yes, Counsel Valentine.
This is similar to what I've been requesting across from the Stop &amp; Shop on Hamden Street, where there's actually some folks that are living in that block with some disabilities, including blindness, and they have to go all the way to the Pleasant Street corner to cross because obviously, when people are racing through Hamden, they're not stopping for that crosswalk. And when Matt Sokop was here, I had filed an order that was very similar to this one. So I'm just wondering, in the conversation with the committee, was there some information about what that price tag would be at this point?
Hang on, I'm looking at my notes as we speak.
Because I'll refile my order and try to get on the list. I should go on first, before McGee, I put it in first.
Mr. President?
All set?
If I may?
Well, I'm waiting for an answer.
Oh, you're waiting for an answer?
So I believe that the price tag that was given to us was between $5,000 and $8,000. Additionally, I think one of the issues was there already is a crosswalk there, and it's helping to make it more visible. And so I'm not sure if there is a crosswalk in the location that you're looking at, and if it's more dangerous to put a crosswalk there because of the traffic pattern. So I think there's a number of variables, it's not just like, oh, like we put up a crosswalk wherever we want, it's that there's a crosswalk there and this would, you know, create more visibility with the blinking lights. There is a crosswalk there at the place that I'm talking about. Yeah.
So to this particular order, the amount that he stated was between $8,000 and $10,000, and what he recommended was the solar-powered type rather than the more expensive type that would go in the road.
Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, 12B.
So, Mr. President, if we can suspend necessary rules and take up 12B through 12G as a package?
Okay, sounds good. And these are all various ordinance changes related to traffic?
Traffic and parking.
Okay, and what was the law, we're doing B through...
12B through 12G.
12B through 12G, okay, very good. Motion on the floor is to suspend the rules to take up items 12B through 12G as a package. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, here we go. Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order to add a stop sign at the end of Lynn and Drive going easterly at Lower Westfield Road, per recommendation of the DPW and Engineering. 12C is a committee report to whom was referred an order that a handicap space be placed at 34 Congress Ave. for Hosway and Dujar. Recommend that that be approved. 12D, committee report that a handicap sign be placed in front of 582 South Summer Street for Hector Velazquez. Recommend that that be approved. Item 12E, referred an order that a handicap sign be placed in front of 100 Beet Street for Philip Manzi. Recommend that that be approved. 12F, reported the Committee on Ordinance an order that a handicap sign be placed in front of 16 Clinton Street for Robert Fitzpatrick Jr. Recommend that that application be approved. Item 12G, Committee was referred an order that a handicap sign be placed in front of 195 Suffolk Street for Maria Velazquez. Recommend that that application be approved. These were all recommended for adoption by Counselors Bacon, Lucy, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane. Counsel Bacon, a motion?
Thank you, Mr. President. A motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made, is there a second?
Second.
Second to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. So on the matter of the stop sign, there's a partial rotary, but from an engineering point of view, it was just a matter of stopping all entryways onto the rotary, and it was a recommendation they had made, so it's pretty straightforward. There's been continual traffic issues up on the hill there. And the rest of these orders went to the Disabilities Commission, all the appropriate paperwork was completed, all the appropriate site visits were completed, and the recommendation from the commission was to adopt.
Okay, any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing their first reading?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
A motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading, any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained, there is no further discussion. When your name is called, a yes vote is in favor of making all of those ordinance changes, a no vote is to deny all of them. Counselor, Madam Clerk, please read the roll.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Graney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.[1770.83]
Sullivan? Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved all of those ordinance changes. Next up is twelve H. Twelve H, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the city consider replacing the bus stop at the corner of Hampshire and Maple Streets. It was recently deleted but serves as a busy connection between buses coming down Hampshire Street. Have considered the same and recommend that it be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane.
So a motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you. And I will defer to the maker of the order once I just make a general comment that this was a bus stop in the past. And I'll refer to Counsel Lisi.
Counsel Lisi?
Yeah, thank you. So I got a call from a constituent about how the deletion of this bus stop was making it difficult for people coming down on the bus on Hampshire Street to connect to buses going elsewhere in the city on Maple Street. The nearest two bus stops would be on Appleton by the War Memorial and then down on Essex Street by the library. So it seemed that there was a bit of walking to do to get to the other two stops and we didn't want people to miss their connections to those connecting buses. So on the city side, we're going to be approaching PBTA about reinstating the stop. We're putting it in ordinance form and then reaching out to the buses.
Great. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained?
Okay, motions have been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it. The clerk will call the roll.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved that ordinance change. Marked twelve H on your agenda. Next up is twelve I. The Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the city council order the removal of a handicap parking sign at five seven Martin Street. The business at that address no longer requires, requires it. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading. Any discussion? We're pretty self-explanatory.
Pretty straightforward.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan? Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Twelve J, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the speed limit on Lower Westfield Road be reduced from thirty to twenty miles per hour for the portion of the road from Homestead Avenue that leads to the Elks. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane.
Motion to pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass its first reading. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. That area's been a continual source of complaints from speeding to people going up trying to cut through, thinking they can get all the way to Westfield by going up by the Elks. And so I filed an order to ask the engineer to take a look up there. And when he went up to check and he saw the line of sight, which is very limited, and the slope of the road, he came back and recommended that it really should be a twenty mile per hour speed limit there.
Okay, Counsel Grani? Yeah, just a question. I don't think that there's a posting up there on that link of road. Would he, would he put a posted sign up there at twenty miles per hour?
Yes. I may have to, I don't know if I'll have to file a separate order in that regard. I believe they will post it because it is a special speed determined by an engineering need.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Lisi?
Thank you. Just to respond to Counsel Grani's question, if a street is unmarked, it is assumed an automatically thirty miles per hour, so we only put up markings if there needs to be some sort of reminder or a change in the speed limit or if it's made to be less than that thirty.
Thank you. Okay, motion on the floor is to, any, we're at first reading, so I'm just gonna take the votes on that. Okay. A motion has been made and seconded to pass the first reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion to pass the second reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
Motion that the passage be ordained?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the passage be ordained. There is no further discussion. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the ordinance change and no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Brezneren?
Yes.
Shatnoff?
Yes.
Grani?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan? Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved the ordinance change. Item twelve L, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that section two dash thirty-four of the ordinances be reviewed and amended as necessary to prevent any office of City Hall from closing early or closing during normal business hours. Have considered the same, recommend that the order's been complied with. Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane.
Or motion to receive and adopt the committee report?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report. Under discussion, Counsel Bacon.
Thank you, Mr. President. So our understanding from the maker of the order was that a couple of times some situations had arisen where there were things going on during the day and people were not available in their offices when the public had a reasonable expectation that they would be, the most recent being our inaugural event upstairs. And so it was just a cautionary conversation that we had. And through our administrative assistant, the committee is asking that a letter be sent over to the mayor to ask him to please remind department heads that their offices need to be available to the public even when there are other activities going on. But that generally, it wasn't felt that we needed to revise an ordinance to accomplish it, just to remember that we're here to serve the public.
So we'd ask Ryan if you could give a friendly reminder to the mayor and just draft a quick letter on behalf of the city council to the mayor and the department heads that here in City Hall and otherwise that they do need to remain open at all times during normal business hours. Okay, any other discussion, Counsel Tomlin?
That's a great point. I'm glad you brought that up because I didn't get a couple calls from some people, constituents that were actually looking for, to do some business and one of the offices was closed. I mean, even just leaving one person there, you know, during the, you know, so you can keep that open, I think that's important. You know, that's what, that's what we're here for, so. Good job, thanks.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of passing the first, oh, no, first reading. Just that the committee report has been received and complied with, all in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twelve M. Twelve M, the Committee on Ordinance to whom was referred an order that the city council amend the parking ordinance on Westfield Road near Blessed Sacrament that will allow parking during the weekend masses and will allow additional parking space. Have considered the same, recommend that the order be given leave to withdraw. Counselors Bacon, Lisi, Shatnoff, Bartley, and Jordane.
A motion to receive and adopt?
Aye.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and adopt the committee report, which is to give the item leave to withdraw. Counsel Bacon?
I'll just make a general comment and then defer to the maker of the order. Our engineer, Yemlip, came in and he had looked at the area and just found it too narrow to be able to establish parking there. He said in order to be off the road enough, people would have to be on the tree belt and impinging there. So he just, from an engineering point of view, couldn't make that recommendation if the maker?
Counsel Bartley? I made the motion to give leave to withdraw, so.
Okay, very good. All right. About any other further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the committee recommendation to give the item leave to withdraw?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Twelve N.
Mr. President?
Yes.
On this one, there's been a question raised by the maker of the order. And it was an item that was added on an amended agenda to the committee that was posted on the web, but it was not sent in the mail. So the maker was not present at the meeting.
Okay, so you're asking to send it back?
We did take it up, but if, I just wanna just check with the maker of the order if he would prefer that it goes back to committee. I'm happy to do that. Otherwise, we did take it up in committee.
What's your pleasure, Counsel Brezneren?
I'm gonna, if this doesn't go back to me, then I'm just gonna file something similar. With, I mean, it's not anyone's, I'm not blaming anybody, but.
Then why don't we send it back to?
I wasn't made aware.
I think we might as well just send it back to committee then, okay?
Thank you.
Save pencil and.
Right.
Okay, very good. Motion on the floor then is to refer back to committee. Is there a second?
Second.
Second, motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer back to committee. Under discussion, Counsel Bartley.
Okay, so, I mean, the engineer, I, you know, you can free, refile, refile the order all day long. Engineer's gonna still come up with the same answer that you're gonna have to reroute traffic and this is gonna cost a lot of money, a lot of money. So, so, yeah, reroute the traffic, but, you know, you have to do engineering studies galore. You're gonna have to, you know, change the roadways. This is gonna cost tens, if not hundreds of thousands of dollars. So we can have the discussion again, we had it once already, but, so, but, so I'm gonna, Mr. President? I, I'm, I'm just gonna vote to oppose that because I think we should give leave to a draw, so.
Okay, Counsel Brezneren?
And I will refile the order and I'll have everybody that lives on that street come in and we can explain to all the homeowners and single-family taxpayers that, you know what, we're not gonna help because it costs too much money. Sorry, have a great day. They're already dealing with geriatric authority, they've been living with the mall, which they're not complaining, they wanna be business-friendly. But when I get pictures and videos of eighteen-wheelers backing up, they got, they got the dumpster trucks getting all the trash from the new sheriff's office up there, I mean, just that and out of courtesy, as, I, if the maker of orders are not there, I typically table them unless I hear otherwise. I was not aware that this was on the agenda. The agenda that was mailed to me did not have this item on there. I mean, I'm, you know, I'll start checking my emails every fifteen minutes, but the agenda that got mailed out to me should be the agenda that we follow.
Okay. Any other thoughts, discussion? Motion on the floor is to refer back to committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Back to ordinance. Finance Committee reports. Item thirteen A, the Committee on Finance to whom was referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the city council hereby accepts the provisions of the Clean Energy Initiative Grant and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Have considered the same?
Well-read. Well-read. It was tabled, it's a mistake, it should be tabled.
How dare you let that get to the agenda?
Practice for the next time.
I thought that was a typo. I was trying to help. Okay.
Well-read.
I'll get to practice my oratory skills. So with all that practice, we have thirteen B. And that was not tabled.
No.
Okay, very good. How dare you let that get to the agenda?
Practice for the next time.
I thought that was a typo. I was trying to help. Okay.
Well read.
I'll get to practice my oratory skills. So, with all that practice, we have thirteen B. And that was not tabled.
No.
Okay, very good. So thirteen B is a report from the Committee on Finance, which does not bear the signature of three of the committee members.
Yeah.
Huh? Yes, and Counsel Leahy abstained on that matter.
I'd like to make a motion to table it. I'm not trying to be funny here.
Well, what, you mean to, under our rules, as a general rule, we have no committee reports. So, under the Roberts rules, it's supposed to be stolen committee.
Okay, then I'd refer it back to committee.
Until the committee decides to vote it out or otherwise.
Okay.
Okay. So thirteen B is stolen committee. All right, moving on. The first two were easy.
Mr. President.
Yes, Counsel Tomlin.
What, how many names were on there?
Two.
Out of the five?
Two out of five.
That's it? So, we can't even bring it up?
You need a committee report.
Somebody just forget to sign it maybe, or?
No. You got one abstain, you got, in the votes, two-two.
Can I explain?
Sure.
Uh, Counsel Leahy thought he could vote on it, but then found out he couldn't, 'cause of conflict.
So, we have one abstention and a vote was two-two. So, generally speaking, that's not a committee, you need three votes to pass something in committee. You got, the vote right now is two-to-two.
I saw before that if we discussed in the committee, we could still bring it up, uh, even though, um.
Well, then the committee would've had to vote to send it up with our recommendation. The only other way now to get it out of committee is you'd have to take ten votes to remove it from committee. Right now, it still sits in Finance. So, you would need ten votes to remove it from committee. You could do that, but, um, absent that, you're gonna need some action by the Finance Committee in the majority.
If I, if we can go on to...
Otherwise, we're moving on to thirteen C.
I think thirteen E will shed some light on that one.
Okay.
And if not, we can always make a motion, move from committee. I'll, you know.
All right, we'll see. So, uh.
I'll explain.
Thirteen C.
Now we're stuck.
Thirteen C, the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that the city institute a hiring freeze for all departments until the city can better address the budget shortfalls and move forward the plan as advised by bond counsel. Have considered the same? Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Leahy, Bacon, and Shattnuff.
Make a motion to receive and adopt the committee report.
Second.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to receive the committee report and to adopt, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
One thing, it was amended. Is that amendment on there? Mr. President?
Yes, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
That was amended. That amendment should be on there, to read that, not to add, um...
Correct. Uh, let me, let me note, there was a five-oh vote to amend the order as follows. Amen to say not including, uh, public safety positions and not including department heads.
Correct.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. So, this is for non, non-department heads, non-public safety positions.
Are we waiting for?
I think just Jim's coming back, but, other than that, you have the floor.
All right, thank you. Um, really what this represented was trying to, uh, address the current budget problems that we have. Um, we've seen some postings in City Hall with regards to positions being offered up. Uh, and this was trying to say, prior to jumping into doing all these new hires, let's stop. Uh, the mayor now has said he's gonna set up a committee with members from here, as well as department heads. I think this is a good time to just say, let's do a hiring freeze, go into that new committee that's being set up to address all the positions and all the budget issues that we're running into. The committee thought the same way with those amendments, um, the way they are, which would be non, uh, department heads, which you know, one might be leaving. And obviously, common sense would say you'd have to fill that position. And then the, uh, public safety one. So, that, that was from the committee. Uh, I open up to the rest of the members who were there.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of adopting?
Aye.
Posed?
No.
No.
Want a roll call vote on that, or?
No.
Okay. All right. Just making sure. Thirteen D. Uh, Committee on Finance, to whom was referred an order that in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the Burn Memorial JAG two thousand fifteen grant, and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. Have considered the same? Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Leahy, Bacon, and Shattnuff.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Motion's been made and seconded to, uh, receive and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yes, this is a grant for thirty-three thousand, forty-four dollars. Um, the council might remember, I filed an order, uh, last year with regards to some radio issues, uh, that we're having with the, uh, Police Department. And really, this kinda goes towards that issue. In essence, we have six sites or cell, kinda towers throughout the city that bounce off, the signals for the police to get in touch with each other, emergencies and everything. Well, four to five of them are, are in disarray, which then leaves our police, uh, in some safety issues. Uh, I filed the order to get that addressed and figure out how to fix it right away. They are in the works currently as to how to better, uh, address that. This grant will go towards patching, not, you know, replacing, but patching one of those, uh, poles in order to make sure we get signals in certain areas. So, it's just a patch for thirty-three thousand, which then, the chief will get back to us as to, in essence, replacing the entire system.
Any other discussion? Counsel Tomlin.
Yeah, I just wanna say, it was a, a good, uh, talk on that, and what, what they're actually gonna do. And one of the votes we made tonight, actually, about the monorail up by, uh, Mount Tom. I, that's the area that the Police Department, I believe, is putting the, um, antennas on. So, that'll be help with the coverage, you know, throughout the city.
Any other thoughts? Okay. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of accepting the provisions of the Burn Memorial JAG two thousand fifteen grant. A no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Shattnuff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you've approved item, uh, thirteen D and accepted the provisions of that grant. We are now on to thirteen E. Thirteen E is the Committee on Finance, to whom, to whom was referred an order that in accordance with Mass. General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the FY two thousand sixteen nine-one-one support grant, and authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of that grant. Have considered the same? Recommend that the order be adopted. Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Bacon, and Shattnuff.
Motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive the committee report and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Uh, like the last grant, there was no city match. Forgot to mention that, sorry. This one, there's no city match as well. This grant represents a hundred and fifty thousand, uh, four hundred dollars, which is kind of an annual renewal, uh, grant for dispatchers. The issue that arose in committee was, the one-fifty coming in can go towards equipment, salaries, training, overtime, of which the chief said in the meeting, he took the salary money that was authorized in our budget process and moved it over to the overtime, which then he's now taking this grant, the full amount of the grant, and pointing it in towards paying salaries for dispatchers, which we do have twelve currently. Within that same meeting, he pointed out, the system for dispatchers is a little over ten years old and is not doing well. So, you have a grant coming in to help cover the cost of equipment and repair or upgrade, as well as salaries and everything. And then he said, no, I'm gonna take it all and pay for salaries because I gotta cover it, 'cause I took it for overtime, which then led to the two hundred thousand of overtime that we just kinda passed up for a minute. So, that's another one-fifty towards overtime. So, in essence, as we've seen throughout the budget process, last year, this year, and, and prior years, we can take from certain line items, shuffle the money around, and it never really goes to City Council until we start picking at it and finding out where the money is. So, one, about one-fifty was moved from dispatcher salaries to overtime, to cover overtime. And now they want two hundred thousand on, on top of that. Um, we pride saying that you really shouldn't take the full amount. You should at least do some type of equipment upgrade, which then I said, well, what upgrades do you need? Didn't have the answer to that. I did receive an email today saying that he did speak with one of his officers, and about twenty-six thousand dollars worth of, uh, costs would be needed for the, the old equipment, which he then said he spoke with a fiscal, uh, officer for the state, or fiscal specialist for the state, and they reallocated the money. One thirty-nine, three ninety-three, and ninety-one cents would go towards paying for the dispatchers, but the excess, eleven thousand plus, would go towards equipment. So, you'd still have a shortfall for the twenty-six thousand that you need for upgrades and stuff. So, that's how they're kinda allocating the money now. They're not gonna now put the full amount in. They're gonna keep eleven thousand towards that twenty-six thousand shortfall that they have. With regards to overtime, and the reason I said that we should kinda look towards tabling the two hundred thousand is, if we look at the free cash allotment, and we went over this in Finance, but there's been some changes. We had, uh, five hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and eighty-five dollars, and then we took the fourteen thousand, three hundred for the election, 'cause we have the primary coming up for the presidential primary. That left us with five hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three fifty-eight. Now, we have certain orders coming in for free cash allocation. Six ninety-one, uh, six hundred and ninety-one dollars and thirty-one cents, or thirty-two cents, we'll talk about that later. Five thousand for advertising, that's a new one, and thirty-five hundred for extra clerical help in the treasurer's office. That's a new one. If those get passed, which is a little over nine thousand dollars, we're down to five hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And, what, five hundred and twenty thousand, one sixty-six. If you take the two hundred thousand of overtime, the fire department has said they've put in a request for a hundred thousand of overtime, that's three hundred thousand. If those were approved, you'd be down to two hundred and twenty thousand, one hundred and sixty-six dollars.
And it hasn't even snowed yet.
And that's one issue. It hasn't snowed yet. The other issue is, we, we've learned with legal costs, we're, we're trying to get around that and deal with that the best we can. That can always change. We've seen that at the end of the year. So, we have to watch out for that. I also received a phone call from the fire chief, and this is the one that kinda, kinda scared us. He said, within the budget process, remember, we accepted that grant to cover some employees, some firefighters, to bring them on, and kinda get us up to full staff, or as close to full staff as best a grant could. Somehow, the numbers got a little mixed up. Instead of budgeting for seventy-two, we really did sixty-five. If you put in all the math together, he's at a shortfall of roughly three to four hundred thousand dollars.
Oh, what?
So, stop, stop. He's gonna have to come in and explain this. So, if we were just to say, take the two hundred thousand, take the one hundred thousand, once again, you're down to two twenty, one sixty-six. If it's true, I, this is just a phone call I received. Things can change, but if it's true, and let's just say the short number is three hundred thousand, we don't have it here. So, we're gonna have to find it somewhere in the budget, or we're back to the old adage of, we have to make cuts to address this problem, or we're forced back to stabilization. We already heard what bond counsel told us on that one. So, I'm just letting you know what the numbers are. So, table the two hundred thousand, which we kind of already did. I know we might wanna take it out of committee, but that's the reason why I said, just, just leave it. January twenty-fifth, I think we all agreed for a meeting.
Yep.
We'll bring them all back up. And we'll bring that to get some more clarity on that, that fire department shortfall, if there truly is one. So, that's where we stand. This one-fifty is a grant coming in. It was supposed to go to dispatch, to cover that cost and help the city. They took that money, gave it to overtime, leaving a little leftover for equipment repair. There is no city match. I'm not saying not to accept the grant, absolutely accept it, but we have to really watch on how we move the money around with these grants. That's the real catch here.
Plus, to brighten your day one more, the school department said they need about four hundred thousand due to their budget estimate they claim is off for school transportation. They said that they knew at the time that the, the budget came out, that they had granted an increase under their new contract, and the number was much higher than what was originally allocated in the formula. So, there's about another four hundred thousand dollar bill. They don't feel that the schools can completely absorb that.
So, now we have that issue, so.
So, you've got that lingering out there as well. So, there's a lot of, uh, there's a mounting request for this dollars.
The grant is just before us, of one fifty, four hundred.
Yeah.
Long-winded, but we really couldn't discuss the two hundred correctly, 'cause it didn't come out of committee. Just, but it's all tied into this.
Sure. All right. On the sunnier topic of the FY two thousand sixteen nine-eleven support grant, um, which is a hundred and fifty thousand dollars for dispatcher pay, we're at first reading. Any other discussion? Counsel Bacon.
I just wanna note, um, relative to Counsel McGee's comments on the overtime, that based on the numbers that we were given in discussion in committee, the Police Department's basically on an overtime spending path equalling or exceeding last year. And we may all recall that during the budget time, we said, flat budget. We didn't cut 'em, but we said, flat budget. Live with what we're giving you. Don't come back for free cash. And so, what we heard were numbers that looked like they're gonna add up to the same numbers, if not exceed the numbers of last year, just as in FYI. Thank you.
Also, if I make, Mr. President, on that, I did receive, we didn't have it at committee time, I did receive the breakdown of everyone receiving overtime, grant overtime, as well as court overtime. And I'll have Ryan send that out to everyone. Um, take a look at that overtime expenditure.
Great. Counsel Tomlin, I think you wanted to be heard.
Yeah, I just wanna, I, I'm glad, uh, the chairman discussed, uh, the situation we're in, and I feel comfortable now, just waiting on that, leaving that in committee, because I didn't realize the other situation with the, uh, with the fire department, how much that affects everything. Um, and we'll be discussing that anyways on Monday night. We have a meeting, so we could always bring that up at the next meeting. And, uh, I think, you know, it's just that, that we sat here with the chief for, I don't know, it was about an hour and a half, two hours, and really got a lot of information and back and forth. And, and some of the numbers weren't totally correct, but, um, I think we, we have to, as Counsel Bacon said, live with what we promised them to live with. And, uh, I know it's difficult, and the chief did say he may have to make some cuts and, and cut some, uh, services, but, um, we have to live with what we have and, and just go from there, you know?
Okay. Motion on the floor is to pass first reading?
Second.
Posed, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
It's on adoption of the grant.
Pass the second reading.
Motion is made, so, okay. Any other discussion on second reading? Okay, clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the FY two thousand sixteen nine-eleven support grant. A no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Shattnuff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas and one abstain.
Two of them?
Yep.
Oh, okay.
Trust me.
All right. By your vote, you've approved item thirteen E. Thirteen F. Thirteen F is a report from the Committee on Finance, to whom it was referred, a financial transfer in the amount of six hundred and ninety-two dollars and thirty-one cents from free cash to pay the assistant clerk. Recommend that this be adopted. Counselors Tomlin, Leahy, Bacon, and Shattnuff. Counsel McGee is abstaining on this vote, and the vice chairman is Counsel Tomlin, so if you would be kind enough to make a motion.
Receive, adopt, and pass the first reading?
Motion's been made and seconded to pass the first reading, under discussion, Counsel Tomlin.
This is the amount, uh, when, um, our city clerk went on maternity leave, that the assistant clerk will get this amount of money to get caught up in doing the job while she was, um, while she was out. And I believe we voted on this, um, about two years ago in ordinance committee, that this, when the city clerk has been out, that the assistant clerk would get the salary during that period of time for the, uh...
The differential.
Differential, uh, pay, and that's what this amount is for.
Okay. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Pass the second reading?
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of granting the six hundred ninety-two dollar and thirty-one cent transfer, and no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Shattnuff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee? McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas and one abstain.
By your vote, you have approved the transfer request for the city clerk's office. Item thirteen G. Item thirteen G is a report of the Committee on Finance, to whom was referred a financial transfer request in the amount of twenty-five thousand dollars. This was to remove the money from the police, uh, drug testing line item and place it into police overtime. This has been considered by the Finance Committee and has been recommended that it be denied. And this recommendation comes from Counselors McGee, Tomlin, Bacon, and Shattnuff.
Motion to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading.
Second.
The committee report's to deny.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to receive, uh, and adopt the committee report and to pass its first reading, under discussion, Counsel McGee.
Yeah, in essence, I, I think you hit it all. It's, we allocated in the budget twenty-five thousand to do drug testing now to make sure, uh, other officers were safe. It was a big push by the chief. Um, he wanted to take a step back and take that money and apply it towards overtime, and we said that, that's just not how we'd like to see it, do the testing, simply because you have to make sure everyone else is safe. Um, so, we made the motion to deny it, to, to go forth with the drug testing. And he said he would. Uh, if it's denied, he would go forth with the drug testing.
Very good. Any other thoughts on first reading? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Pass the second reading.
Okay, motions been made and seconded to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Counsel Bacon.
I just wanna say that I am strongly in support of this. I remember the argument at the gate, how we had to make an extra expenditure, because we had to make sure that the public had the trust. And I'm a strong supporter of our public safety personnel, but I think this is, gives them the seal of approval when we take steps like this. And they're assured that the person they're working next to is safe, and they're assuring the public that they're holding up the safest standards. Thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Tomlin.
I agree with, uh, our colleague, my colleagues here, Counsel McGee and Counsel Bacon. It's very important that this money was, be utilized for what it was meant to be there for, and, um, for the safety of our, our police and our, our citizens.
Thank you. Any other thoughts? Okay. Clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of adopting the transfer request. A no vote is to deny it.
No, it's...
No.
Yeah, well, I, I'm just doing it as, uh, regular, that's my new, my New Year's look at this. Instead of getting yes and no, and no means yes, and yes means no, we're just gonna do it in all in the affirmative. So, the motion on the floor was to just adopt. So, we're gonna just do yes vote to approve it, no vote to deny it. Does that sound unfair?
No, you're confusing us.
The committee recommendation is to deny.
In the way you have to do it in the system, is you have to do it like, in like, for the committee report.
Yeah, the committee report. All right.
There goes that resolution.
So, the committee recommendation, so much for that. That New Year's resolution. I figured I'd just try, 'cause it seemed like everybody looks at me like I have three heads when we did it the regular way, but, okay. That's fine. So, the committee recommendation is to deny. Therefore, a yes vote is to deny, a no vote is to approve. Okay? So, the clerk will call the roll.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Resnahan?
Yes.
Shattnuff?
Yes.
Greeney?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy? LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Confused.
Yes.
Sullivan? Oh, I'm sorry, Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Fourteen yeas and one nay. One abstain.
By your vote, you have denied the transfer request. And I have one other item that seemed to elude us, I'm told by the chairman. Um, it was item thirty-two, and it was, I guess, a compendium to that FY two thousand sixteen nine-eleven grant. It's related to By your vote, you have denied the transfer request. And I have one other item that seemed to elude us, I'm told by the chairman. It was item thirty-two, and it was, I guess, a compendium to that FY 2016 9/11 grant. It's related to a sum of about twenty-eight thousand dollars, so I'm going to read that at this time, or do you want to just move to remove from committee?
Make a motion to suspend the rules, move from committee to take it up?
Yeah. Motion is to remove a formerly marked item thirty-two from the December fifteenth City Council agenda related to an FY 2016 9/11 training grant. Motion on the floor is to remove from committee. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Introduced by Counselor Todd McGee. Order that in accordance with Mass. General Law Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, the City Council hereby accepts the provisions of the FY 2016 9-1-1 training grant, authorizes the establishment of a fund or other method appropriate for the accounting of the receipts and expenditures of all resources associated with the administration of said grant. And I believe this is in the amount of twenty-eight thousand one dollar, but do we have a motion from?
Make a motion to receive, adopt, pass the first reading.
Motion has been made a second to receive, adopt, and pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Thank you. Sorry for the confusion. We had it listed on the agenda as the nine-one-one grant, but it actually turns out it's the nine-one-one part A and B.
Yeah.
So, since we didn't feel that we...
One's called the support grant, the other's called the training grant.
So, we figured, do it correctly, in essence, pull it from committee. We learned about it and the details to it in finance, but really you have to pull it from the committee to actually bring it up correctly. So, that's what we're doing here. It's, you have the one fifty, four hundred, which is for dispatch. I explained that one. This one's twenty-eight thousand one dollar, which then goes for, in essence, dispatch regulatory compliance training. So, that, they didn't move any monies or anything. This is actually the money they need to do the training. Once again, no, no match by the city.
Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor passing the first reading?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Pass the second reading?
Okay, motions were made a second to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of approving the FY 2016 9/11 training grant, a no vote is to deny it.
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved that grant. We had no public safety, public service committee reports for this particular meeting. We also had taken care of the DGNR committee reports. We also had no charter and rules committee reports for this particular meeting. We're now on to the motions, orders, and resolutions section of the meeting, and that starts with item number eighteen. This is introduced by Counselor Bartley.
Yes, can we make a motion to suspend the rules and take eighteen, nineteen, and twenty as a package, as well as do an abbreviated reading?
Sure. Motion's been made a second to receive items eighteen, nineteen, twenty. Take them as a package with an abbreviated reading. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item eighteen is introduced by Counselor Bartley. This is seeking to approve a certified project and special tax assessment agreement for a GS Energy Services located at fifty-five Jackson Street and eighty-four Sargent Street. They're proposing an expansion. Item number nineteen seeks to vote to declare certain parcel surplus property, that's five-oh-one South Bridge, zero South Bridge, five-oh-one South Bridge, two-ninety-nine Walnut, and three-oh-seven Walnut. And then item number twenty is that the City Council, in accordance with the urban renewal plan, vote to approve the transfer of certain properties for one dollar. I believe it's the aforementioned properties that I just stated, including some others. Five-oh-one South Bridge, South Bridge, five-oh-one Bridge, a parcel on Cabot Street, sixty-one Cabot Street, one-sixty-three Sargent Street, and one-sixty Middle Water Street, seeking to transfer all of these over to the HRA. What's your pleasure, Mr. Chairman?
Thank you. My pleasure is to have them refer to the DGNR committee, please.
Okay, motion on the floor is to receive eighteen, nineteen, and twenty, and refer them all to the DGNR committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item twenty-one from Counselor Bartley. The city changed Russell Terrace and Harrison Avenue from allowing one-way traffic to two-way traffic. That's an oldie but goodie.
Ordinance, please.
Ordinance. Motion on the floor is to receive and refer to ordinance. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item twenty-two, introduced by Counselor Bartley. With at least three traffic fatalities so far in 2016 and other close calls with pedestrians being struck, the City Council invite the police chief to a future public safety meeting to discuss traffic enforcement and mitigation efforts used and planned by the HPD.
Public safety, please, and a copy to the chief of police.
Okay, motion is made and seconded to receive. Refer the order to the public safety committee with a copy to the police chief.
Mr. President?
Counselor Roman.
He recognized you first.
I would like to, in the spirit of our good friend Anthony Soto, former Counsel with the makers, yield and allow me to be added to that order as well.
Adding Counsel without objection.
I will yield.
Without objection, adding Counsel Roman as a cosponsor.
Myself as well.
And adding Counsel Valentin as a cosponsor without objection. Any other discussion?
No, we'll have it committee.
Let me just get those two names on there. Very good. Motion on the floor is to refer to the public safety with a copy to the police chief. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number twenty-three, that a handicap sign be placed in front of one-forty-eight Leary Drive for Giovanni Correa. Motion is to receive, to refer it over to ordinance with a copy to the Disabilities Commission.
So moved.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number twenty-four, introduced by Counselordane, that zoning section seven-point-one-point-one-four be amended as follows by adding the following clause. Parking lots or structures designed to serve these institutions and their accessory uses and buildings are allowed, whether or not a fee is charged, for their use, provided that parking lots shall only be allowed by special permit of the City Council. This is a refile from eight-four fifteen. I request that this go to the ordinance committee.
So moved.
Motion's been made a second to send to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item twenty-five. Item twenty-five is introduced by Counselor Leahy. In an effort to save money, the Department of Public Works performs random moisture checks on salt they purchase for city streets. As we know, the city of Hoyok purchases the salt and pays for it by the ton. Moreover, the DPW performs this within the accordance of the regulations of the Massachusetts Department of Transportation. Also, they, the DPW, keep accurate records of these random moisture checks that they can be reviewed at a later time.
Received and sent, receive, adopt, send to DPW, and a copy to each of the DPW commissioners.
Okay. Motion has been made and seconded to receive, adopt, refer to the DPW, and individually to each of the DPW commissioners. Under discussion, Counselor Leahy.
It's an order that I file every year for the last sixteen years. I know when I worked for the Mass. Department of Transportation, they do it. They saved excess of hundreds of thousands of dollars each year because, you know, if you don't do moisture checks, if you don't get refunds, you're essentially just paying for water. I would also like to make, send a copy to Public Service as well.
Okay, with a copy of this order to Public Service. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number twenty-six is introduced by Counselor McGee. This is requesting a financial transfer from the assistant solicitor's line item, the amount of fifty-five thousand, and to transfer it to Professional Services Special Counsel, fifty-five thousand.
Make a motion to suspend the rules and take twenty-six up now?
Second.
Okay, motions and to pass the first reading?
Pass the first reading, yeah.
Okay, motions were made a second to pass the first reading. Under discussion, Counselor McGee.
Yeah, I think we're all in the executive session and heard of all the legal cases and the cost for outside counsel, that as we learned, they never filled this position. So, instead of looking at free cash they're going to take from this position because they didn't fill it and apply it towards outside counsel in order to cover those costs.
Right. The only thing I would add to the discussion, just by way of facts, was during the budget process, we were told this position was going to be handling the receiverships for the city, but I'm told by the law department they have other attorneys that are handling those duties now. So, this will not be at the loss of the receivership program for Hoyok, that those duties are being handled by two other attorneys. So, that was actually why, one of the reasons I voted for the creation of this job. Counselor Leahy?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up. I do have a question. Are we going to be, at one point or another, be seeking a city solicitor? Because Carrie does a wonderful job, but she's, she's the assistant city solicitor. Do you know, you have any thoughts on that?
Well, we could file an order requesting one, but other than that, it's the mayor's prerogative if he chooses to fill it or not.
Just curious. Thank you.
And you just all voted for a higher increase?
For not department heads.
Oh, that's right.
We need department heads.
I voted against that, by the way, but it was a first vote.
Should we go back and reconsider so that everybody could be on record for that?
I'm just saying.
I heard some no's. I just want to make sure everybody's duly noted.
I think there were three of us that voted no.
Okay, okay. I don't want anybody not to get their credit.
No, the numbers were clearly in your favor. That's okay.
Okay, very good. So, motion on the floor right now is at first reading to pass fifty-five thousand dollars for this particular transfer. Any other discussion? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
Posed, so moved.
Pass the second reading?
Second.
We made it second to pass the second reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. The clerk will call the roll. A yes vote is in favor of the financial transfer, a no vote is to deny it.
Tomlin?
Yes.
Bacon?
Yes.
Valentine?
Yes.
Bartley?
Yes.
Bresnahan?
Yes.
Shatner?
Yes.
Grainey?
Yes.
Jordane?
Yes.
Leahy?
Yes.
LeBron Martinez?
Yes.
Lisi?
Yes.
McGee?
Yes.
McGivern?
Yes.
Roman?
Yes.
Sullivan?
Yes.
Unanimous vote of the body.
By your vote, you have approved the transfer of fifty-five thousand for the law department. Item number twenty-seven is introduced by Counselors Roman and Valentin. Order that the city of Hoyok establish through ordinance a human rights commission, a multi-member body of the city. The commission shall advocate and be an information resource for the rights guaranteed pursuant to state, local, and federal law on the basis of race or color, gender and gender expression, physical or mental ability, religion, socioeconomic status, ethnic or national origin, sexual identification or orientation, or the age of all persons within the city of Hoyok.
Yeah, motion to refer, send to ordinance.
Okay, motion's been made a second to receive and refer to ordinance. Any discussion? Save it for committee? Okay, Counselor LeBron Martinez?
It's okay with the makers of the order if I can be added on?
Sure, without objection. Adding Counsel LeBron Martinez as a cosponsor.
I'll add my name as well.
Sure. Adding Counsel Lisi as a cosponsor. All right. All in favor of receiving, referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item twenty-nine. Item twenty-nine is introduced by Counselor Roman. That the city of Hoyok centralize and consolidate within the fire department all lists of empty and abandoned buildings, providing access to its server to any and all other departments who need it.
I'd like to refer this to finance, Mr. President, please.
Okay, finance, all right. Perhaps just a friendly suggestion, perhaps public safety? Only because we generally, that's the fire department's realm?
Yep.
Okay. So, motion on the floor is to receive, refer to the public safety committee. Under discussion, Counsel Roman.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Again, in my travels and meeting with businesses and dealing with different departments in my ward, as you know, there's tons of abandoned buildings, having to go to three different departments. I recently took a tour of the fire department, met with the fire chief myself, and I would encourage you all to do that. They have a phenomenal, state-of-the-art database of all abandoned buildings, including whether they're safe. And it's really a consolidation, and I think it'll save the city of Hoyok money if it's all under one, and it'll allow any department head, it'll allow Ryan, ourselves, anyone to access this unified database. And I just think consolidation and streamlining government, this is smart towards that process.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor referring to public safety?
Aye.
Posed, so moved. Item number thirty, introduced by Counselor Roman. That the DPW study the impact of adding a traffic light on the intersections of Main Street as well as St. Vincent Street in order to slow the speed and alleviate the flow of traffic, also to make walking and crossing the street safer for students attending William J. Dean Technical High. Do you want to just have them take it and then send it back to public safety, or?
Yes.
Okay. So, motion on the floor would be to refer to the public safety committee with a copy to the DPW to do the analysis, and then report back to the committee. And then you can determine if you need an ordinance change or...
Yes, and I would like to add Counselor Lisi's name.
Adding Counselor Lisi as a cosponsor, please. Okay, very good. Any other discussion?
This was a constituent request, actually, Mr. President. I received an email from a constituent, and actually a few neighbors have been getting, thanks to Counsel Bartley, a bunch of emails and calls, thanks to all the residents down by Main Street and D Tech, which I'm grateful for, and it was actually a consorted effort of three residents from that area.
Excellent, thank you. Any other discussion? Counsel McGivern?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to thank Counsel Roman for not adding the whereas's this agenda.
Yes.
I think the importance is it saved us at least one page on the agenda.
That's true.
Ryan tells me, we sometimes print close to fifty, fifty-five copies of the agenda per meeting, so that one page adds up to fifty, fifty-five, sixty. We're saving money for the budget, and thanks to Councilor Roman, we're on our way to balancing it.
There you go, thank you, Councilor Roman, helping us and you didn't even know it. Motion on the floor is to send to the public safety committee with a copy of the, to the DPW to do the study and analysis, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item thirty-one comes to us from Councilor Sullivan. He seeks to amend Appendix B of the Wetlands Protection Section of our ordinances, I believe, uh, to add language that would recognize the canal system is not part of the natural wetlands or waterways of the region, and are not in the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. The canals are a mechanical component used in the service of the public as described in the Section Eight Exceptions. Ordinance?
Ordinance, make a motion, second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to ordinance, under discussion, Councilor Sullivan?
Uh, yeah, I just want to let you know, we, bringing this forward because we're doing a lot of development now along the canals. Um, oth- other cities, um, uh, Lawrence, uh, there, there are exceptions in the state statutes for Lawrence, that specifically mention Lawrence, Holyoke, and the Cape Cod Canals. Yet we have, uh, you know, passed, um, certain other things that are in conflict with this exception. And I, I could go on to state numerous examples of it, uh, they're costing the rate users, taxpayers of Holyoke a lot of money through programs that the gas and electric has to follow, uh, pay prevailing wages. One example I can give you is having a fellow with a skimmer, like a pool skimmer, following the weed whackers along the canals during the summer. And I, I think it's gotten a little excessive, especially in these times of tight budgets, uh, and it's, um, the, the rules are out there, they're in conflict, I think they need to go to committee for some, some study and clarification.
Very good question. Councilor Grady?
Yeah, I just have a, a quick question on this, uh, you have to remember that the water in those canals is from the Connecticut River, and there's also Connecticut River wildlife that live in those canals. Some may be endangered species.
Well, they drain them every year. They, they drink canals twice a year.
I don't know, it's just.
Well, discussion to have the committee.
I think you're gonna have to check with the EPA.
So if any grass from the weed whacker gets in, I don't know, do we? Yeah, adding Councilor Busnahan's name as a co-sponsor. All right. Okay, all in favor of sending to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item thirty-two comes to us from Councilor Sullivan. Ordered that the discard of hazardous and regulated waste be subject to fines of twenty-five hundred to five thousand dollars, and a reward leading to the arrest and conviction of, uh, oh, be, uh, be established for, in the amount of five hundred dollars. Examples would be asbestos, PCBs, lead, mercury, et cetera. This would include items containing hazardous materials such as refrigerators with freon, brake pads, uh, floor tiles with asbestos, paint, batteries, containing lead, as well as light fixtures containing PCBs. Although the DEP and EPA already have stringent rules and penalties, this would aid in the enforcement and further discourage this type of activity. Ordinance? Please, okay.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to the ordinance committee, any discussion, or save it for later?
I thi- I think I spelled it out pretty well.
Yep, you got it, this is all under that same genre. Okay, very good, all in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item thirty-three is introduced by Councilor Sullivan. Ordered that the discard of refuse items on public or private property in excess of two pounds constitutes an act of illegal dumping. Examples are items such as mattresses, furniture, tires, bags of household trash, et cetera. Penalty for such illegal disposal to be not less than one thousand dollars and up to twenty-five hundred dollars, plus a reward for the arrest and conviction of someone who would be nefarious enough to do something like this, of two hundred and fifty dollars. This action is being brought forward to differentiate between the act of simple littering and gross dis- uh, discard. This is a leading sign of the blight in our city, and is an expense to the DPW as well as a health concern. Ordinance? For an establishment of an ordinance, okay. Uh, motion on the floor has been made and seconded to send to ordinance, any discussion, Councilor Sullivan?
One of the reasons, uh, both for this and, and for, uh, such, uh, high penalties, I, I don't anticipate that we're gonna be able to go out and make a hundred thousand dollars by catching these people. But we're also a tremendous loss of revenue right now under the littering, uh, statutes that we do have on the books. The, the penalties, they, they can range up to three hundred dollars, but generally speaking, uh, the, the, on the low end, they go to twenty-five dollars. If you do the right thing and bring it to the city yard, it's twenty-five dollars. Well, if it flies off the roof of your car by accident while you're driving down Canal Street, you've saved twenty-five bucks. Um, if the penalty now is, accidentally flies off the roof of your car and you keep on driving, it's a thousand. I think, uh, e- even if you don't collect a lot of money on, uh, on these fines, you're gonna drive a lot more business to the city to collect the proper dumping fees for these, that they're not realizing now that they're having to go out and collect anyways. Uh, so, that, that's part of the reason for such a stiff penalties. Also, um, you know, we've had a chance to, um, investigate some of these, uh, illegal dumpings, and, um, they're not coming from Holyoke. Four out of the five that we've had a chance to trace back are coming, uh, the vehicles that are doing this are coming from surrounding communities.
Councilor Bartley?
Uh, yeah, just, uh, things, I, I just want to add my name to the order, I, I really like it, uh,
Yep.
But, uh, I'd also would just like to point out that, that this is a code enforcement issue. So our, our chief, who I, I respect tremendously, he, he comes to my Ward Three meetings, and he always brings a sergeant with him or somebody. Um, so it's, you know, nothing about that, but, you know, we just heard tonight, he, he just transferred just a hundred fifty thousand dollars, just put it over there, but meanwhile, there's no more code enforcement police officers, no more uniformed officer. So I get this from Brian Fitzgerald, and I get this from other city departments, I shouldn't even say, from the Board of Health and other department heads, um, saying that, that, you know, we could use some help, and specifically, uniformed officers. And, and we had a, a wonderful, a wonderful code enforcement officer who, whose office is right next to mine, and he said how much he enjoyed it, but yet, the chief, and, and this is just my opinion, and I'll, I'll stick with it, that the chief, in my opinion, when he saw what we did to the overtime, he said, "Okay, city councilors, okay, city councilors, good for you, you cut my overtime budget, I'll show you." And guess what, he did. He did show us, didn't he? Cause he, he took the money, he took the money and moved it along, put it back at overtime, and took away the code enforcement officer. Thank you.
Council Valentin?
Thank you, um, I actually filed an order about, um, the, the enforcement of this illegal dumping. Um, I think it was referred to ordinance, and I'm, I'm not, I don't think the discussion has happened there yet, but um, this is a huge issue in Ward Four because of the makeup of the streets. And not every ward, obviously, has an alley issue. Um, we certainly do, and so I'm all for, um, ways to continue to hold people accountable, but again, as Councilor Bartley said, the issue is enforcement. Um, at this point, if someone has a complaint about something regarding an alley, the message that those residents get is, "You're the abutter, you're responsible, it doesn't matter if ten mattresses were dropped behind your house." So, we don't have, you know, unless we catch people at the moment, unless we have pictures, unless we have license plates, unless we have video, or if you go through the garbage and you find an identifying document that somebody left behind, such as a cable bill, or something that says what their name and their address is, DPW, Board of Health, everybody says, it's the abutter's responsibility, so it's, it's a huge issue.
Punishing the victim.
Correct, it's a huge issue, um, especially, I, I'll speak for my ward in Ward Four. Um, again, I'm all for raising the, the, the price tag on this, I'm all for, um, really making it scary for out-of-towners to come in and do their dumping. Um, but I am concerned about the enforcement, and so if I remember correctly, the wording of, of my order that's in ordinance somewhere, um, is along the lines of looking at ways in which we can find some funding for the enforcement piece, which includes video cameras, and I remember we had a conversation about it here because Springfield has been doing that as well. So, um, I'm not gonna necessarily add my name to the order because I'm, I'm not in agreement with, you know, some of the numbers, but it is a huge issue, and, um, right now, what we're doing is we're penalizing the victim.
Council Sullivan?
Just to, uh, that's the reason for such a high reward, I'm gonna stay with, even my, uh, much ridiculed flip phone has a camera on it. It's very easy for, uh, any citizen to get a picture of that license plate or the person and collect that reward.
Well, no, you gotta create an ordinance. Oh, okay. Somebody's gotta help Howie out with, move the question, move the question.
It's not past my bedtime yet.
All right, Council Lebron Martinez?
I, I also, I mean, I agree with the situation with the ordinance enforcement, um, I had a meeting about a year ago in, 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 in the flats regarding the situation, and people started, um, I told them, you know, we brought the, um, enforcers in to, to discuss this, and it's, uh, it's a matter of people turning in the license plates or calling it in. I think one particular place where the dumping was being done, there was a camera, actually. And that sort of helped, I, I think, somewhat, um, after following up. But, um, it is an issue, I lived there myself, I, I, owning the house right in back of the Holyoke Public Library, there was trees before that parking lot got done and all of that, there was dumping of refrigerators and all of these types of items, and I was responsible for the cleanup, and this used to happen at nighttime, I would not see who dumped it, and I mean, from TVs, everything that was there, um, and I'm glad that, you know, that, because of the parking space, um, being developed there, um, helped that dumping, but it was a dumping ground at all, at all, at all time, and they do it mostly at nighttime. And if people don't cooperate to call or turn, you know, see whoever is doing it, it doesn't help even.
Right, Council Roman?
Um, I too would like to ask the maker if I could be added to this, um, order as well. Um, and, and I rise, again, I think that especially, eh, to echo the sentiments, uh, from my colleague, um, Council Lebron Martinez, it's a really bad issue, especially in South Holyoke and the lower wards, uh, we are a, a dumping ground. Literally, people come out from South Halley, we see them all the time off the bridge, dump it, go, or, you know, Willamance and Bridge, and I can't tell you the amount of litter and, and things that we have done there, I think this will send a strong message that the city of Holyoke is not gonna be your dumping ground any longer. And I think the fees should be this high to discourage individuals, and if it's a revenue generating thing that could be able to help us put back into getting this code enforcement officer back, I mean, that is a travesty, and I, I rise with the sentiments, and I think in committee, maybe we can play with the numbers. But I think we need to send a strong message to those, uh, illegal dumpers that the lower wards aren't their dumping ground.
Mike, I'd like to add my name also as a co-sponsor, too, please, yep.
Under committee.
Huh?
Under committee.
Very good, motion on the floor is to send to the ordinance committee, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item number thirty-three, excuse me, strike that, item number thirty-four, from introduced by Councilor Tallman, that the city council consider an amendment to the zoning ordinance to address wind power turbines and the associated equipment, both in large scale and residential installs. Ordinance, Peter?
Uh, ordinance would be great, I'd just, uh, file this on behalf of the, uh, building commissioner and the, uh, law department. People are starting to look into wind, uh, turbines and energy, green energy, just like we're doing solar, so it's, it's something that's gonna be coming up within the next, uh, probably a year or so, so I think it's something that we gotta discuss.
Like putting a wind turbine on your house, or something?
Just, man, something, I don't know, save some energy, right?
Interesting, yeah. Okay, motion on the floor is to send to ordinance, Council Roman?
I'd like to be added to that order, please.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Adding Councilors McGee and Roman?
Happy to have anybody, I'd like to get on this.
Yes, adding Councilors McGee and Roman to thirty-four, all in favor of referring to ordinance?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Item thirty-five, introduced by Council Vacan, that no dumping signs be posted on Applemont Highway near Route two oh two, with any fines noted. The area is becoming a regular dumping area, the area is believed to be Holyoke Water Works' property, near the entrance to the trail.
Um, I think we can just receive, adopt, and refer to DPW, but I would note that there's not really a part of the city that is exempt from this dumping phenomena.
No, there isn't.
And it has gotten put on people that have property out in the country, it's not well lit. One guy, eighty years old, got cited to clean up dump, cause it was his property, he didn't dump the stuff there, somebody came and just dumped everything there. So, it's all over the place, thank you.
Yeah. Motion is to receive, adopt, and refer to the DPW, any other discussion? Harry Nun, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, item thirty-six?
Mr. President, can I just ask a quick question before we move on, going back to the illegal dumping? Um, so I just, I looked at my email here so I could find it, so it was an order that I filed October sixth, and, uh, it was about our current illegal dumping ordinances being reviewed, blah, blah, blah. And for some reason, it got referred to public safety instead of ordinance, I, I have it here. It was on the public safety, um, agenda. So for us to take it out of there and send it to ordinance, how would we go about that at this point?
You could just make a motion to pull it out, probably why, at that time, the only thing I'm just thinking about it is maybe because you said review the ordinances, so you, and then if you decided to make a change, then it, you know, you'd want it to go to ordinance to make the change, so.
Would you suggest that it stays in public safety, or?
No, no, I, I like your idea of just having, if ordinance is gonna have a meeting on that.
Especially if, if the order from Councilor Sullivan is now.
Yeah, exactly, yeah.
So can I make a motion to?
Yeah.
Uh, remove?
Remove, Councilor, uh, motion on the floor is to, uh, remove from committee, a motion, uh, a motion, an order.
From Council Valentin, relative to illegal dumping, and a discussion of those of the current ordinances on that.
All in favor of removing from the public safety committee?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Motion from Council Valentin, if I heard her correctly, was to receive that order and refer it over to the ordinance committee.
Second.
That has been seconded, any further discussion? Harry Nun, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, Ryan, you'll, uh?
Yeah, I'll, I'll email Ryan the wording so that he knows which one it is, thanks.
Thank you very much, yep. Okay, item thirty-six, introduced by Council Vacan. At the point where Applemont Highway turns right up the hill towards two oh two and meets Rock Valley Road, that the intersection be reconfigured into a T three-way stop. There has been a longstanding safety hazard with the current configuration of the roadways. This is requested if our city engineer finds it to be acceptable.
It doesn't require an ordinance, does it, to create a T, or does it?
Um, be reconfig- If the intersection required, if you're in sta- there's no three-way stop there now to add one, yes.
So refer to ordinance?
Mm-hmm, yep, so motion on the floor is to receive, refer to ordinance, you could send a copy to the city engineer, too, with a copy to the city engineer.
Thank you.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Okay, thank you. Item thirty-seven is that no trespassing on Holyoke Water Works' right-of-way and surrounding areas of Applemont Highway be enforced. There is a high amount of erosion occurring due to high ATV travel in this area.
Receive and adopt and refer it to the police department?
Yeah.
And with a copy to public safety? No, you won't do anything with it anyway, except maybe.
Maybe a copy to the water, I mean, I-
And the water works.
I, I, I also think you should send it to the Water Works because they have their own private security details that they-
Right, I've, I've been in communication with them, and it's, you know, it's a chronic problem, and it's a chronic enforcement challenge. They had the state enforcement people out, but they have to actually see them and catch them.
So motion on the floor is to receive, adopt, refer to the police and water department, Council McGivern, did you want to be heard? And a copy to the water, uh, the environmental police. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved, okay, late file section of the meeting.
Motion to adjourn.
All in favor?
Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn? Motion fails for lack of a majority.
Motion fails for lack of guts.
Late file A.
How many?
How many?
There's a good amount here. Sorry, guys. Huh? All seventeen. Some of, they're not all orders, some of them are communications, like, item number one here.
Dave, take a seat.
You might have to, seventeen.
We'll be here a while.
I don't want you to get too tired out.
These are all emergencies, right?
Apparently. First one up, Dave Guzman. Dear city councilors, January fifteenth, two thousand sixteen, I'm writing to formally notify you of my resignation from the position of collector of taxes, my resignation will be effective at the end of day, January twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. After careful thought and consideration, I have decided to accept an offer of employment with a different organization. I'd like to thank the city councilors for their vote of confidence in me and their unwavering support. It has been a true pleasure to work with you all and to serve the great citizens of Holyoke. In conclusion, I am extremely proud of what my employees and I were able to accomplish throughout my time as collector of taxes. We set our standards high and have achieved success in terms of running a successful office and making sure everything was accounted for. My staff, Debbie Haslam and Yuritza Rodriguez, deserve a lot of credit for what happens in the office of the tax collector. They are the unsung heroes, uh, uh, they are the unsung heroes of the collector of taxes, and I recommend in my absence that Debbie Haslam be appointed as the acting collector of treasurer, eh, a- acting collector of taxes. She has worked in the office for over forty years and knows the ins and outs of the office and everything that needs to be done. She is fully capable of running the office without skipping a beat. Finally, I am truly grateful and blessed to have worked with such wonderful people, such as my staff, department heads, support staff, and all city employees. I wish you all nothing but the best, I am extremely grateful for the opportunity to be the city of Holyoke's collector of taxes, and I am proud to leave the office in a much better place than when I received it. Sincerely, David Guzman.
Motion to, uh, receive, to give Dave Guzman a letter of commendation from this body, and to immediately post that job opening.
Okay. Uh, so motion on the floor is to receive the resignation, to refer a copy of it to the Personnel Department for the purposes of posting the position immediately, getting all this, Ryan, cause you're gonna have to follow up on this. To post the position immediately, as well as?
Uh, give, give Dave a letter of commendation from, from the city council for job well done.
From the city council, uh, and I'm happy to draft something like that. Um, on be- on our behalf, okay? So that's a motion, is there a second to that?
Second.
Second, okay.
Mr. President, do we have to suspend the rules first, to take a late file up?
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right, point of order, point of order stands, uh, motion to suspend the rules to take a final action on late file A, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved.
I renew my motion?
I'm, yeah, your motion stands, I'm not gonna restate it, so, um, under discussion, Council Vacan?
Thank you, I just wonder if it would be in order, since before we meet again, he will have left, and the office will be effectively without a leader, if we should take action tonight to appoint Debbie Haslam as.
I have no authority to do that.
We can't, but we're the-
It's gonna fall under the sixty-one A statute, right, or provision, right, acting department head, mayor appointment, I would assume. That's the same as the auditor.
Yeah, we could.
No, it will fall under.
Yeah, it's gonna be, eh, eh, he's just making a declaration to the mayor, presumably, that's, the mayor would have to pick who the acting is. We have the final appointment, but the mayor gets to pick the acting for up to sixty days.
Thanks for your-
With the emergency thirty, I think, on top of that, there's another provision under the previous legal opinion. Um, okay.
Thank you.
Any, anybody else under discussion? Council McGivern?
Mr. President, I agree with, uh, Council Bartley's motions, but the, we're, we're doing here is receiving the resignation, which is already in effect, because once the clerk received it, went into effect as dated. Um, I, I agree that we should post immediately, but I believe we need another order, and we need to decide as a body if we're gonna interview as a full city council, or let the Public Service Committee do it as is traditional.
Yeah, we'll, uh, we, yeah, we, I agree with you, we, I just wanna get him over the, I, I think the point is, the gentleman has given his resignation, I want to make sure Mr. Judge has that, and just post the job, we can draft a memo internally, I don't think we need a formal order, but, um, I agree with you, we'll have to discuss process down the way about how we wanna do the interviews, and I'll, I'll be in touch with Council Leahy as the chairman of public service, and we'll iron that all out, whether it's as a committee whole, or just his committee. But, um, okay, so, uh, on the motion to re- receive this begrudgingly, to refer it to the Personnel Director for the purposes of posting the job, and also, uh, that the city council draft, uh,
My name's already on it.
A commendation letter to David Guzman for his fine service to the city, all in favor of that?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Late file B, introduced, uh, by Council Jordan, that a no parking zone be placed between the driveway, uh, to fifteen seventeen Ridgewood Avenue and the back entrance of Friendly, second request. Receive, refer to ordinance, please.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Introduced by Council Jordan. This didn't, okay, um, all right, this is relative to, uh, that issue that did make it to the agenda, so this is a duplicate. This is, uh, from Council Jordan, the zoning section, that one I had about parking lots related to.
Like a motion withdrawal?
Yeah, leave to withdraw is fine.
Second.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to give leave to withdraw, it's a duplicate, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Introduced by Council McGee, late file D, five thousand dollar transfer from free cash to advertising.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded to receive and refer to finance, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, so moved. Late file E, introduced by Council McGee, thirty-five hundred, free cash to extra clerical help.
Like a motion to finance?
Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to finance, all in- Motion's been made and seconded to receive, refer to finance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file F, introduced by Counsel Leacy, that the city council approve and ratify an agreement between the City of Hoyoke and Rita Lawler, trustee of the Timothy J Lawler Trust of Seventy-Six Alver Place, South Hathley, and David A Begley and Estelle A Begley, trustees of the Begley Family Realty Trust in accordance with Mass General Law, Chapter Fifty-nine, Section Thirty-eight H, for the payment in lieu of taxes of a certain personal property tax obligations for a solar facility to be located on a property on Martin Street.
Make a motion to send to ordinance?
Oh, really? They're all about the same. Okay, can you give me all those?
Kevin, make a motion to receive and send to ordinance?
Mr. President.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm going to try and do them as a package so we can make them all in one swoop. Okay, great.
Mr. President, solar issues don't come to ordinance, they go to planning?
It's on pilot.
Pardon? Oh, it's for the tax break?
It's for a tax break for, to get payment.
Oh, to get the payment?
So should it go to ordinance or finance?
Finance, maybe.
Yeah.
Or receive, it's into finance? No, send to ordinance.
Get in line.
All right, we'll send it to ordinance, that's fine. You can always, you can always move it later. All right, just so you know, we have a number of these on this. Late file G, also from Counsel Leacy, a pilot for a solar facility on Babala Road. Late file H, pilot for a solar facility on Kelly Way. Late file I, pilot for solar facility at Map One Seventy-Six, no address. Address. Doesn't say. Just says Map One Seventy-Six, parcels two and three, Hoyoke.
Is that Whitney, yeah?
And then, oh, Linda, you'll love late file J. Introduce, pilot for solar facility at Rock Valley Road. And, which hasn't even been adopted yet, but we got a pilot for it. So motion to suspend the rules on all these to take them up as a package with the abbreviated reading. All in favor of that? Also moved, so that's late file F through late file J and motion on the floor is to send them all to ordinance.
Ordinance.
Ordinance, finance?
Ordinance. Rebecca said they did it before ordinance.
Okay. Well, if the committee thinks otherwise, they'll send it to finance. Motion on the floor is ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Okay, the file is getting thinner here. Late file, introduced by Counsel Roman. Oh, he's got a whereas in here, everybody. And we were just complimenting him. Whereas Capri Pizza. Located eighteen Cabot Street, was established in September in nineteen sixty-six by Jack LaCoury. Capri's Pizza began on Jackson Street, moved to Main Street before settling on its current location. Since nineteen eighty-two, Mr. LaCoury's nephew, Fiore Santinello, his wife Rosa and three sons, Alfonso, Gennaro and Salvatore, have taken over ownership and management of this Hoyoke anchor establishment. In two thousand fifteen, Capri Pizza was honored by Mass Live in their best of competition with the distinction of people's choice, winner of the best pizza in Western Mass. Order that the city council create a proclamation honoring Capri's Pizza's fiftieth anniversary.
Have you added on to that, sir?
Sure.
How dare him bring a pizza at ten o'clock?
How about all counselors, but you added on? All in favor of that?
Aye.
And motion to suspend the rules to take a final action on late file K?
Second.
All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also move, motion to adopt and grant the proclamation. Any discussion? None, Counsel McGivern?
I apologize, Mr. President, for the whereas for Counsel McGivern and I will make sure that they're no longer included. I felt this was appropriate.
Counsel McGivern.
I'm full agreement with this. It is one of the, one of the better pizzas in the City of Hoyoke. We never say the best, right? And I will be glad to volunteer to deliver the proclamation in the chemistry.
We're going to put it on a cardboard box. There'll be food inside. All in favor of adopting this wonderful order?
Aye.
All in favor? Opposed? So moved. We'll get that proclamation cooking. Literally. Late file L, introduced by Counsel Valentin. That the crosswalk on Hamden Street across from Stop and Shop be evaluated for improvements, including but not limited to a blinking crosswalk lights. The safety of pedestrians is in jeopardy at this location on a regular basis due to the speed of which vehicles travel on Hamden Street.
Send to public safety with a copy to the engineer?
Okay, motion has been made and seconded to send to public safety with a copy to the city engineer. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved.
For the record, this is my first late file since I first took office.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow, very good. And she's making up for it because we have late file L. Here we go.
Can't say that anymore.
Counsel, Counsel Valen.
Late file.
Late file. Put a late file on eliminating late files. Counsel Valentin, now one to two parking spaces are eliminated on Hamden Street at the intersection of Hamden Street and School Street by installing a no parking sign at that location. This intersection presents as a safety concern to drivers who have limited visibility when their vehicles are traveling on Hamden Street.
Send to ordinance, please.
Okay, motion's been made and seconded to send to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Late file N, introduced by Counsel Vacan. This is a refile. She states, ordered that the solar zone be allowed by right in business zones, but only be allowed by special permit of the city council in residential zones other than as an individual home. Ordinance?
It's a refile, yes. It's getting stale in committee, thanks.
Motion has been made and seconded to receive and refer to ordinance. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Our last late file order, I'm sorry, there's no more. That, introduced by Counselors McGee and Tolman, late file O, that the tax collector position be posted. This is in the spirit of Joe McGivern's point. And the city council and/or public service committee conduct interviews for the position starting on or about January twenty-ninth, two thousand sixteen. Motion to suspend rules to take a final action on this. All in favor of that?
Aye.
Also moved. A motion that would assume that this be adopted, referred to the personnel director as well as send a copy to the public service committee?
Yeah, and just an update on that, I've been talking with Ryan, so whoever's on the, that committee, we're looking at, I think, the fifteenth of February, first available meeting.
Okay, great. So maybe we'll be lucky enough to have some candidates for it. Counsel Tolman.
I just want to state that that was all Counsel McGee's idea. My name just happened to be on the sheet, so.
Plausible deniability. All in favor of adopting this?
Aye.
Opposed? So moved. Motion to adjourn would be in order. Motion's been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?